Good morning. It is nine AM. I'm going to call the meeting to order. Supervisor Gonzalez, will you lead us in the pledge of allegiance, please? Can I get a motion to acknowledge the certificate of posting, please? So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay. Do we need to do roll call? Or are we okay? We do need to do it? Okay.
Supervisor Setello?
Present.
Supervisor Curro?
Here.
Supervisor Cosmiki?
Here.
Supervisor Gonzalez?
Here.
We have four present. We have quorum.
Thank you. Okay, now we're going to go to presentations and recognitions. The first, can I get a motion to approve a proclamation designating October fourteenth, two thousand and twenty-three as Walk a Mile in Her Shoes Day in San Benito County?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 Anyone opposed? Okay, five zero. Supervisor Cosmiki, will you present that certificate, please?
Yes, indeed. Good morning, everyone. We're here today to recognize one of the events that we have in town that happens every year. We're going to have the latest event this Saturday, Walk a Mile in Her Shoes. And it's a very, you go out there, it's a very fun festive atmosphere. People are dressed in their high heels, including a lot of the men. And the point is to bring awareness to a lot of these issues that our local organizations are dealing with when it comes to, you know, sexual violence and a lot of the unfortunate issues we have in society. But really, the goal, as far as I'm understanding, is to really shine the light on those issues, to bring the community together. And it's one of those events that I'm always really impressed by and as far as the organization goes and the people who are involved and obviously the mission that this really revolves around. And it doesn't get any more important than the work that you do on a daily basis. So first, I'll read some of the proclamation, then if it's okay, I'll hand it off. So, "Whereas Walk a Mile in Her Shoes Day is intended to draw attention to the fact that rape, sexual assault, and intimate partner abuse remain serious issues in society. And whereas, in addition to the immediate physical and emotional costs, rape, sexual assault, and intimate partner abuse may also have associated consequences of post-traumatic stress disorder, substance abuse, depression, homelessness, eating disorders, and suicide. Whereas, no one-person organization, agency, or community can eliminate these issues, we must work together to educate our entire population about what can be done to prevent rape, sexual assault, and intimate partner abuse, support survivors and their significant others. And whereas, Walk a Mile in Their Shoes expands the dialogue between men and women on gender differences, gender relationships, and gender violence, and for men to publicly demonstrate their courage and commitment to preventing gender violence." Now therefore, be it proclaimed that San Diego County Board of Supervisors designates October fourteenth, two thousand and twenty-three, as Walk a Mile in Their Shoes Day in San Diego County. So, really appreciate you being here. And if you want to say a few words, I don't know which one you want to go first. Just introduce yourself, your organization.
Hello, good morning. My name is Eric Elliott. I'm from Community Solutions. It's one of the organizations here in San Diego County that helps to serve survivors with sexual assault and domestic violence, as well as with the mayor's house. This is our, going to be our ninth year hosting a Walk a Mile in Their Shoes. It's really an amazing event. As previously mentioned, it's going to happen this Saturday. Registration starts at ten AM. People get to practice walking in shoes. We walk literally downtown. It's about like less than a mile, to be fair, but you still feel it. And the event is really a family-friendly event. We have families, kids, lots of different folks that come out. We provide the shoes for you, so you don't have to have your own if you can't have them.
We have one just for Colin right here.
Love the color.
And there's some flats, in case you need to have some different accessibility. But really, the event is to try to encourage folks to just start a conversation, right? Oftentimes, these conversations are very hard to have. And sometimes we may feel like we talk about healthy relationships. We talk about what a relationship should look like. But for others, we may not have that space at all, really. So it's about just encouraging conversation and starting the first step in that. Each of us can take a step in, step in and play a role, right? You know, it's just creating more opportunities to have conversations, calling out toxic behavior if we see toxic behavior in our families. Having opportunities to just create space to create conversations in general. Having meals, having family time together where conversations can just be had so people can be heard. And lastly, I think just leading with strengths, right? So many times, people's voices are taken away in these type of situations. So it's to remind people what they bring, their value, you know? How much we support and love them. And to remind them of how much they're worth, because so many times, it's taken away. So the more that we can step in and do those things, the more that we can help to prevent these problems moving forward, you know? So it takes all of us each day to step in to do these things, so I'm really appreciative. Hopefully, all of you can come. Hopefully, I see all of you all there. It's again, it's a great event, and we're really glad to be partners with the mayor's house in this event every year. And we'll have a DJ and fun stuff.
I really don't have much more to add. This is why I keep Erica my sidekick. She's elegant in her speech and getting everything across. But I do want to thank all of you, and I really want to thank the Board of Supervisors because you have been a tremendous sense and support of us for all of the years. And it's really nice to have some of you come out every year, show your support. And please join us. It's a really fun time. And the shoes honestly don't hurt your feet.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you very much. Okay, now if I can get a motion to approve proclamation recognizing Public Safety Appreciation Night in San Benito County?
So moved.
So moved.
I'll second.
So all in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Five zero. At this time, can I have the Elks join me at the podium, please? So a huge thank you to our Hollister Elks Lodge. They have been doing this event and honoring our public safety for many years. And I asked them, what is many years? Is that five years? Is it, what is many years? And Mr. Morrow said that they've been doing it longer than he's been there, and he's been there for sixty years, so for many, many years. So thank you so much for all that you do with this Public Safety Night, but also all that you do for our community. You're an amazing resource in the community, and we really appreciate everything you guys do. So on to the proclamation. So for years, Hollister Elks Lodge, number one, four, three, six, has hosted the Public Safety Appreciation Night to honor those who keep our community safe. Every day, millions of people depend on the skills, expertise, and commitment of public safety professionals. Fire, police, sheriffs, California Highway Patrol, Cal Fire, Cal Fire, and all public safety personnel are vital to our community. San Benito County public safety personnel and law, fire, and emergency medical, through their dedication, skills, and expertise, provide protection and life-saving services daily. It is appropriate to set aside a day to extend our appreciation and respect for public safety workers who serve us locally, statewide, and internationally as heroes, who put their lives on the line every day to serve and protect. During Public Safety Appreciation Night, we celebrate the legacy of our public safety personnel and their vital role in protecting the community of San Benito County. Now therefore, be it proclaimed that the San Benito County Board of Supervisors does hereby recognize Public Safety Appreciation Night in San Benito County and encourages the community to acknowledge and thank all public safety personnel for their role in protecting the communities they serve. Thank you very much. Do you guys want to say anything? And this is for you.
Oh, thank you very much.
Thank you.
I guess I've been elected the spokesman. My name is Anthony Morrow. And yes, I have been an Elk for sixty years. And for that period of time, even when we were at the old building above Wayland's Drug Store, that was our original building, built in nineteen twenty-two. And we've been doing Public Safety Night. We also do our Veterans Appreciation Night in November. And for all the years that I've been there, like I said, I know it's been done, except for the COVID years, kind of slacked off a little bit. But we appreciate the public safety individuals, the veterans, more than anything else. And we will do anything to protect them. We do donate approximately a hundred thousand dollars a year, which is, people are just finding out now what we've been doing, and I've been tracking it for the last thirty years. So that's three million dollars to this community. And we're very appreciative of everything you've done. And believe me, we're here to hopefully stay for a long time. Thank you again very much.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Okay, now can we get a motion to approve proclamation designating October seventh as Ageism Awareness Day in San Benito County?
So moved.
I'll second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Five zero. Supervisor Curro?
Come on up, guys. Okay, well, everyone's coming up here. I'm really honored to be able to present this in a manner of recognition of October seventh as Ageism Awareness Day in San Benito County. Ageism refers to the stereotypes, how we think, prejudice, how we feel, discrimination, how we act towards others based on age. And adults over the age of sixty are the fastest-growing age group in the state of California. And San Benito County has the third-highest growth rate for the sixty-five to eighty-four population among all California counties since two thousand and ten. And ageism towards older adults affects their health, longevity, financial well-being, and the economy of San Benito County. Preventing ageism in education, employment, housing, and healthcare will benefit all. And recognizing that it is up to all of us to ensure that the older adults are respected and portrayed as capable, effective, and valued in our area of society. Ageism awareness and preventing ageism is beneficial to our citizens of California by improving the quality of lives within San Benito County. Now therefore, it be proclaimed that the San Benito County Board of Supervisors designates October seventh, two thousand and twenty-three, as Ageism Awareness Day in San Benito County. I really am happy to see such an active group. I know we have come a long ways in addressing ageism, but also being proactive with our seniors and bringing senior services here. I want to thank each of you, especially Clay, because I have learned so much from what you've done. And Mickey, for your advocacy at the state level to bring funding for this very important cause. So thank you for all that you do.
Thanks, and I do want to thank Clay Kemp, Executive Director of the Seniors Council Area Agency on Aging. And I'm here with two of my board members, Mickey Luna and Tammy Aviles. So I want to thank them as well for helping me provide the leadership on this issue. And of course, thank the board for this recognition. It's just one piece of how we treat our seniors better and provide services here. And this, very little notice to all of you about this day coming up, so we appreciate the quick action and the proclamation. And I think it's just one more example of how we, and it's the greater we that I'm talking about, help older adults in our community. So thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, now can I get a motion to approve a proclamation designating September fifteenth through October fifteenth as National Hispanic Heritage Month in San Benito County?
So moved.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Five zero. Supervisor Gonzalez, will you read the proclamation, please?
I am so honored to be able to present this as National Hispanic Heritage Month. As the only sitting Latina here in the county, I thank you for allowing me to present this. September fifteenth through October fifteenth, two thousand and twenty-three, is National Hispanic Heritage Month. It is nationally recognized, and the county of San Benito recognizes the Hispanic heritage and is American heritage, and we see the influence in almost every aspect of our day, our lives. Each year, Americans observe National Hispanic Heritage Month by observing the histories, cultures, and contribution of American citizens whose ancestors came from Mexico, Spain, the Caribbean, Central and South America. The observation started in nineteen sixty-eight as Hispanic Heritage Week under President Lyndon Johnson, and was expanded by President Ronald Reagan in nineteen eighty-eight through the legislative encouragement of Congressman Esteban Torres of California to cover this period in which we celebrate today. The day of September fifteenth is significant because it is the anniversary of independence in Latin America countries. Costa Rica, El Salvador, Guatemala, Honduras, Nicaragua, in addition to Mexico and Chile, celebrate their Independence Day on September sixteenth and eighteenth, respectively. And whereas, this year's theme, Latinos Driving Prosperity, Power, and Progress in America, encourages all to connect with the Hispanic heritage and focus on the themes of prosperity, power, and progress, recognizing the significant strides of Hispanics in the economic, political, and social growth of the United States. And we recognize and honor the many ways that Hispanics have enriched the fabric of our society and have redirected ourselves to address the lack of equal access to opportunities that we still face. And whereas, the Hispanic population of the United States is now sixty-two point one million, constituting eighteen point seven percent of the total population. And whereas Hispanics and Latinos represent sixty-two percent of San Diego County population, with a wide range of nationalities and backgrounds, all of whom make a positive contribution to education, nonprofit, government, and business sectors, which reflect a remarkable diversity of American people. Therefore, now it be proclaimed on behalf of the Board of Supervisors and the people of the San Diego County, does hereby proclaim September fifteenth, two thousand and twenty-three, through October fifteenth, two thousand and twenty-three, National Hispanic Heritage Month, and encourages all residents to celebrate our unique and vibrant history and recommit ourselves to a shared future of healthy, peaceful, safe, and sustainable communities for all. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, next up. Thank you. We will receive a presentation on the two thousand and twenty-four, or two thousand and twenty-three, sorry, professional training series and hand out our employee achievement awards.
Good morning, Madam Chair, members of the board, Henny Ring with Human Resources Administration. Just what a brief presentation I just want to go over with what HR had launched last year, or this year, sorry, this year regarding a professional training series. We call it for short a lunch and learn, and it was for all county employees. On January sixth, Human Resources started this professional training program for all county employees. The program was designed to provide employees with useful information related to their work, professional development opportunities, and/or to improve communication, building experiences. Just, just an overall, like, way to kind of encourage people to use different skill sets and learn different things to help them in their positions. These sessions were designed to assist all employees, particularly those who were either going to, looking at promoting from like a supervisor level to management or maybe promote within, within their departments. Also, those who are just who are interested in their own personal developments as employees with San Benito County. The training program was provided between twelve noon to one thirty, so employees could participate over their lunchtime. So they, they committed during their own personal lunch hours to do this training, and we really appreciate that. The program was consisted of three classes discussing the following topics. The first one was Challenge to Make a Difference. The second one was Time Management, Gain Control of Your Time. And then the last training session we did was CalPERS Retirement, Understanding the Basics. And we did that one because everybody here is, everybody with the San Benito County is a CalPERS member. And sometimes you start here, and you don't really understand really what CalPERS is, so we tried to give them some information, not that we want them to retire anytime soon. But it is kind of helpful, just for planning purposes, you know, looking at your future within the county and understanding the basics on that, so. Today, what I'd like to do is just honor the employees that did all three of the training classes. There were nine employees. We had a total of about thirty-five employees that participated in each class, so that was really nice. But we did have nine employees. I think they're, they are on the board. See those as well, but I'll read them out. Employees were Ramona Bond, Catherine Casey, Claudette Frye, Judy Garner, Rene Henkla, Sean Morrison, Chow Kao, I'm sorry if I butchered that, Victor Tofoya, and Lisa Sivala. So we want to thank them for participating and spending their time and investing in themselves and within San Benito County. I do look for, we do look forward to next year as creating maybe a few more classes, adding a little bit to it. We're going to do a little survey and ask, get employees input what they like to, like to learn, what we like to bring to, to them. This again is part of their development, and we, we really encourage that. I do have one special call out, and that is to the HR staff. And that is to Rose Justo, Agusania Gallegos, and Elvia Barosio, who, they were the backbone to this program. This was something that I had done previously, and I brought to them, and they ran with it. Getting the speakers, the trainings, the sessions, sending out all the communication. They really are the backbone. It's a staff of three HR staff, and they are, they're pretty mighty. I'm pretty proud of them, and so I, I thank them for their time and just their dedication to this as well. So we look forward to next year, two thousand and twenty-four. Any suggestions? You know how to get ahold of me, and we'll go from there, but thank you.
Thank you, Annie.
Annie, thank you so much to you and your team for bringing this and doing this. I think this is so important, and, you know, I just appreciate you guys doing that. Are any of the employees that are on this list here, are they present in the chamber?
I didn't invite them because I wasn't sure if, I just, we're going to give them certificates. We do have one tentative date that we're going to meet together, probably have like a lunch or something, just to thank them for this. But we still have one more thing planned on this. But I didn't, I didn't invite them. I, I messed up. I should have, but.
Okay.
They will be get certificates. We'll be telling them. And so, and some of them are probably are paying attention right now. They're probably like, wow, I didn't know.
Well, thank you to them. I think that's wonderful. And in anything we can do for kind of that professional development, I believe, helps the individual, but also helps the county as a whole. And I would be happy to have the Board of Supervisors sign certificates as well for any of the employees. And if you need us to attend anything, please just let us know or let me know.
I have a couple of things planned for next year. One is I would like to do one of the training classes with one of the Board of Supervisors. If they'd like to stand up, sort of step up to, to give whatever presentation or even just kind of do a brief speaking on what the board does.
Absolutely. Thank you. Do any of you guys want to say anything? Supervisor Curro?
Annie, I'd just like to say thank you. Being a longtime county employee, not just in San Benito County, but other counties, these professional programs were the backbone of what inspired me to get into government because it taught me that there was a real need and a cause. And so I thank all of these employees that did all three classes. I did do one of them, the time management. I'm not very good at managing my time, so I really needed some help there. But I just want to say thank you so much to all the staff that put this together. It was really great. And I look forward to seeing more.
Thank you.
I also want to say thank you to the employees for taking their time to improve themselves. I'm a firm believer in being a lifelong student. And anyone who's going to take the time to improve and enhance their skills and their abilities is, you know, hats off, you know, from me to them. I congratulate them. And I did see the notices come out, and I'm like, ooh, I knew I couldn't afford the time to hit every single one of them, so I kind of bypassed it. But kudos to those that did, these nine that were successful in achieving their, their certificate. So thank you for providing that opportunity for them. Thank you.
Yeah, thanks, Madam Chair. I just want to say the more the merrier on, when it comes to professional development. Big believer in that, so whatever we can do to keep exploring options for professional development, I'll, I'll be supportive. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, department head announcements?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Yeah, we did have a few announcements today. I, I did want to update the board with regards to the displaced departments. We have been working diligently with our insurance folks on receiving funding to move forward with next steps, i.e. ordering equipment, very important. We have an elections around the corner, and there's, that's a significant amount of money that we are obligated to move forward with. So along with that, and the state certification of the equipment and the location, so there's quite a bit of work that needs to be done in a very short period of time. So that has gone on. We've also, I also want to put out a thank you to Monterey County. They were kind enough to allow us to have desk for the displaced folks, and that has been moved. been moved as of now to 1131 San Felipe Road. That'll be kind of our temporary, temporary location for the tax collector treasure as well as our assessors department, as well as our, well, our elections office. Most likely will be moving to the industrial parkway. We will be providing more clarity with the actual locations and the dates when they actually do occupy those spaces permanently. As of now, it's still, they're still at the locations that we announced last time. So here in our office as well as next door upstairs and, and other locations, the library. So at this point, it's still status quo, but we hopefully soon will be able to transfer them over and they can be, have their own space. It'd be good, good for them. I also would like to introduce our new behavioral health director, Dana Edgill. I'd like you to stand up and if you can go to the podium. She has over 28 years of experience in behavioral health services. She also, she's done a lot of things. She's actually created programs and, and has, has worked in that office in Monterey County for some time and has experienced, a lot of experience within the behavioral health offices. You know, speaking of training, we just talked about the importance of it. We have here a California State University Monterey Bay adjunct facility that teaches behavioral health services. So we're very fortunate to have Dana here. It's exciting. She is, you know, well versed. She teaches at a master's level, so it's amazing to have her here in our small county. So thank you for being here and just wanted to introduce you to the Board and to the public.
Thank you. Thank you, Ray, and thank you, Board of Supervisors, and thank you, San Benito County residents. It's my true pleasure and honor to be here with you today and to serve the department. In meeting with our staff, I shared that one of my values is a being of service and that really frames a lot of what I do. I see my role as being in service to our staff, to our Board and to our community. In my short time that I've been here, I've been to three collaborative meetings, two of which our department has hosted and one that was hosted by the Public Health Department. And it's amazing to see the partnerships, the collaboration and the energy that is present to help everyone to be healthy and well and also to address some of the challenges and problems. It was, I don't see what the adjective is, but when we ask, when the Public Health Department asks community members, what are the top pressing health issues that you see? And the number one was mental health and number two was substance use disorders. And I think that we're in a great position to really partner and build on community input and the partnerships to get messages out there about the available behavioral health resources as well as what people can do to help take care of one another and our mental health and our wellbeing. I have a lot of passion for prevention. I served as our suicide prevention coordinator amongst other things in my tenure in Monterey County Behavioral Health, starting programs focusing on early childhood, maternal mental health, transition age youth, early psychosis programs. And I partnered very, very strongly with our community based agencies because they're really the fabric and the heartbeat that really helps sustain community. And so I'm just really so excited to be here and to accept this, this position and look forward to working together with you all in the years to come. So that's all I have to say. Any questions?
Thank you, Dana. We are so excited to have you and welcome here and we hope you love it and I look forward to working with you and you know, I remember when we reviewed your resume and the fight, and it was like, oh my gosh, she has so much that she'll be able to offer this community. So really, really exciting. So thank you. Anybody else want to say anything?
Just welcome aboard.
Thank you.
Madam Chair, yeah, so Supervisor Gonzalez and I have been on the Board the longest at this point and filling this role has been a huge priority for the county and finding the right person has been a big priority. And I just want to say welcome to you and your, your resume, your experience is extraordinary and we're very lucky to have you. And if you, you know, for the Board, I just, you're here to help the community and I see us as being here to help you in any way we can. So please let's work together and address these very, very important issues that we have in the community. Thank you.
Thank you.
And Dr. Clark, thank you for all of the help you've given us over the last year, I think it is now. It's really turned behavioral health around and the wait times have improved tremendously. I don't think we even have any wait times for youth anymore and so just remarkable. So thank you. You've really made an impact here. So thank you for all of the time you've spent here.
Yeah, I will, I'll echo that. Dr. Clark's been amazing. He still owes the Board one last presentation, so that'll be coming soon. And, but we are just, yeah, it's been amazing to have Dr. Clark here as well, truly has been, so. That is all the announcements that we have, Madam Chair.
Okay, great. Thank you. All right, moving on to Board announcements. Any Supervisors, Supervisor Zenger?
Thank you. First of all, I apologize I came a couple of minutes late. Sorry about the tardiness. So a couple of things. One is that I met with the CSA for Tevis Trail recently with our CSA Coordinator and it was a good meeting. I think it was really productive. We addressed a lot of concerns that the neighborhood's having out there. And so just letting everyone know that I'm going to be attending all of the CSA meetings in my district. So when Linda, our CSA Coordinator, she reaches out and invites you to a meeting, I encourage you to go. It's a good opportunity to just bring up any issues, whether it's speeding in the neighborhood or streetlights or whatever it is, we can help address that and I'll be there. So I encourage you to go to those meetings. Other than that, I don't have much else. Just congrats to everyone involved in the fair. Had a lot of fun there, it was good, I think. I don't know how much money was raised, a lot, but great time out there. I think that's it for now. Thank you.
Thank you. Supervisor Curro?
My computer froze, so I'm going to do this off of my handwritten notes. I'll be real brief. I want to thank the public work staff, Jason DeRosa. He had me and B New Abraham from COG on a ride along checking out all the roads and the waterways. It was very educational. We have only made it through half of South County. We have another full day that will be happening on Friday. So it's been very informative and it, it's beautiful. I've been on the majority of the roads. There were a few roads with some surprises that I had no idea were in our county. And I think that there's some collaboration we can do with Monterey County to kind of work on having some assistance where, where they have better access in certain areas than we do. So that's a conversation I'd like to start. The county fair was great. I spent lots of time out there. The tractor pull was the best. If you didn't do the tractor pull, then you missed the whole fair. That was the best part of the fair. Also, when it comes to LAFCO, we have officially received the final approval of our exec, new executive officer. Her name is Jennifer Stevenson. Jennifer comes with years of experience in LAFCO and I'm really excited because she has a team that works with her. So it's not just a single person, it's an entire group of individuals that will be supporting San Benito County LAFCO. So I'm really happy that we'll be moving forward on the MSR reviews and also the annexation applications, which we have been behind on. Oh, I attended a few events throughout the week, but also I wanted to just make an announcement about Hernandez Dam because while I was in South County, the water level has gone down greatly and you'll notice that San Benito River is still flowing right now and it's the end of summer. The reason it is, San Benito Dam is, is having some repairs done. The only way they can actually do the repairs is by actually letting the water out to a specific level. It'll be draining for another 20 to 30 days, then they'll do the repairs and then it'll start retaining water again. So I know there's been some confusion out there why this is happening. I just wanted to let everybody know. It is a project that is in progress by San Benito County Water District and that's it.
Thank you. Supervisor Cosmickey?
Yes, thank you, Madam Chair. Yeah, so I also went to the fair, usually do, and was in the booth for a little while Sunday afternoon, had a chance to talk to residents and I always, you know, enjoy talking to residents about county issues and getting feedback and all that, so appreciate that. And then I also spent about half my time walking around with my family and you know, been to the fair all these years and the media and all this, taking all these pictures of all these kids, but it was really the first time when I truly got to experience the fair through the eyes of my, my two-year-old and just really understood how amazing the fair is, especially to children. It's just, you probably had the, the most enjoyable afternoon that he's probably had at this point, so it was just a really, really great day. So thank you to the fair organizers. I thought it was really well organized. There were a lot of people there on Sunday. It was really, really impressive and it just went to show again just how important agriculture is to this community and everybody's appreciative, you know, perspective on ag. So that was great. Real quick on meetings, we had our monthly intergovernmental meeting and I thought intergovernmental this last time went really well. It really emulated the, the point of intergovernmental. We talked about services that we can work together on departments where we can, basically departments where we are already sharing services such as animal control. And we also broached the library. We're going through an expansion of the library and so I'm just hoping to continue to engage the city of Hollister to see where the city can step forward as we expand library services. And it's really my hope that we view the library as a county and city resource going forward into the future. So we'll continue having those discussions and also hopefully we're also working on fire control as well. I think that's the third big one right now. And then I just want to say I got a call from a farmer and I think it was a really important message that as we're going through this issue with the city, the city of San Juan is connecting their wastewater infrastructure with the city of Hollister. And so we're going to be tearing up some of the backroads to put in the infrastructure. The county's going to be putting $4 million toward repaving a large stretch of, of backroads in the San Juan Valley, which I'm very appreciative of from this county board. But the message was really to, to be, if I can engage staff on this, to really prioritize outreach to the farm community during this period because of the impacts that the, the roads being torn up may have on, on the farm community and the logistics of farmers and already having the Highway 156 log jam. So we know a lot of the traffic is being diverted to the backroads already. So there was just a, putting it out there proactively to really, to have, keep farmers in mind as far as messaging and getting the message out as far as which roads might be closed and just what sort of challenges they may have. I would really appreciate that. And then lastly, I, I think that's it. So yeah, that's about it. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Supervisor Gonzalez?
I actually had a busy couple of weeks, but I want to focus more on the two meetings I had with, with county employees. One, there was a mention about the, the website for the county employees not being able to, to do what they need to do for their open enrollment period. So if that hasn't been resolved, can we extend that to make sure that it's, that they're able to, to get their, make the changes to their, to their medical plan and so forth? And the other one, I'll say for closed session because it's more related to HR issues that were brought to my attention that concern me. Okay? Thank you.
Okay, so I've had quite a few meetings in the last two weeks. Most of them I'm not ready to give an update on, but it's everything from, we have been meeting monthly for quite some time now regarding farm worker housing needs in this community and looking for solutions and really exciting. I feel really optimistic. There's a lot of people that are at the table having amazing discussions. So as there's more to report, I definitely will keep the community apprised of it, but right now just know that it is a priority and we are, we are working on this. I attended the Housing Element meeting that our planning department put on. It was really wonderful. I actually took pictures of quite a few slides. It was very informative and so it was wonderful to see how many Spanish-speaking residents we had in attendance as well. It was really well attended. I've had a meeting with mayors of both cities. We try to meet on a monthly basis, just touching base, hopefully increasing our collaboration and cooperation efforts. And then I attended the Election Security Advisory Committee. I also attended the fair and I actually was there Friday, Saturday and Sunday. It feels like a reunion. It just is such a community event that is so wonderful. I really enjoyed working the booth. I enjoyed speaking with the community. I worked with Supervisor Gonzalez and Ramon and Christina and it was just such a wonderful experience. And so, and then on Sunday Supervisor Curro went out to the fair much earlier than the rest of the community. We were there by like 8:00 AM and we judged the cleanliness of the livestock pens. And so I had never paid attention, as Supervisor Cosmickey said, I've been there all these years. I've never looked at the livestock pens quite the way that I looked at them this year. So it was definitely a learning experience for me. I'd be happy to do it again, but always such a wonderful thing for our community. So, and it was really great working the booth and seeing so much of our county staff come by and say hello. So I don't know how much of our county staff ended up using the free tickets that we provided, but it was really, really nice to see so many of them walking around and stopping by our booth. So thank you again for the support and, in supporting our employees. So with that said, I think that concludes my update. Do we have, well, so now let's move on to public comment. This is an opportunity to address the Board on items of interest not appearing on the agenda.
If you'd like to make a comment in chambers, please provide a speaker card and on Zoom, please press star nine or the raised hand icon. And I do currently have nine in my hand. So let's start with Craig Venturam.
Morning. My name is Craig Venturany. I live on McGladrey Road. I've lived there almost 40 years and in over the 40 years, it was a dead end road and there's probably been at least 17 new homes put on there. And in recent years, we've had two homes brought on there and they are therapeutic homes. One houses people with violent tendencies and the other folks with intellectual and developmental, developmental disabilities. The one for developmental disabilities, from what I understand, is run by an outfit out of New York called YAI and the second is some of therapeutics out of Los Gatos. This has brought a tremendous amount of traffic on our road because they have so many people on three shifts working there and they have no regard for the speed on our road. I've had correspondence with some of therapeutics. I have the documentation here. Then they have talked to their people about speeding up and on the road. It, nothing's been resolved and they're not the only ones on the road. Like I said, there's 17 new homes with those. A lot of them bring in motor homes or travel trailers and bring people in, which makes more traffic on our road. It's a dead end road. So we have also, I have some documentation from social services that went to some of therapeutic and they did a surprise inspection. This is the state. And they found that the people running this facility, youngsters, have no training and they have to be trained within 60 days according to their document. And some have been working their two years and never been trained. So this house that they do here has nobody that's supervising it's, if, there's a whole lot more to be talked about here and it seems like it's, it's out of control. I've talked to the police. I've talked to the highway patrol about speeding on our road. I talked, I got a long dissertation about the man's, he's a traffic control officer and all of his responsibilities. And at the very end, he says, well, I will let the officer out here know if they get a chance, they'll come by our road. That's never happened. I've talked to a couple of the sheriffs and they say they do not have radar. They don't write tickets because when they get to court on a ticket, it's always their word against a speeder and the judge doesn't never side with them. So they just quit writing traffic tickets. So we never just, we just don't have any, we've been trying on our own to do a lot of things. Mr. Zenger came out. He, we, we had a meeting, he met with a lot of the neighbors. These are the neighbors. They're just here to support Dom. And he came out and he listened to us. We took him on a tour of the neighborhood and it's just really, really a, a problem out here. Mr. Medina, previous, he, he came out. We didn't get a lot of traction. I believe Dom is getting some traction, but he can't do this alone. I think he really needs for you guys, when he asked for some help from you guys. I guess I'm out. Anyway, here is all the documentation. This is, there are reports.
Thank you. If you don't mind, go ahead and leave it with the clerk and we'll review it. Thank you.
Next in chambers, Greg Reed.
Morning, Board members. My name's Greg Reed. I live on the opposite end of the street. These are some of the neighbors. The others had to be at work today and wanted to be here. So I'm not sure if you're familiar to be here. So I'm not sure if you're familiar with McGladrey Road. A few years ago, it was paved. It's long, straight, flat, and no potholes. You don't hear that often. And no turns. The opportunity to speed, you can go as fast as you want. It's a long, flat road. At the end of the road next to me is a business. It's a mental health facility. The reason they're there is because it was determined the lack of mental health facilities in the state, they were able to bypass zoning. Assembly bill, I forget the number. And so we have a business that has employees that have shift changes. Three times a day, they're coming and going. When they're late for work, they're on the gas and they're hauling ass down McGladrey Road and we're tired of it. People ride their bikes, they walk. We have kids, grandkids, we have people riding horses. It's only a matter of time before there's an accident on that road. The reason we're here, Dom explained to us, he needs one of you to join him before you can get it on agenda. I'm here to tell you why you need to help him get it on agenda. So another thing is these people, they're not from San Benito County, these mental health patients. They come here and buy our property because it's cheaper. They're from, and we're, I'd say take care of your own. Build these facilities in your own backyard. It's just, it need, we need help. You're our elected representatives. We're looking to you for some resolution. I'm not even sure if they're exempt from property taxes, which would be the only benefit we'd get on them. If there are a loophole and exemption for that. Their, their patients get out on a regular basis. They call it a crisis center. They count and they lock up the silverware. They have alarms, they have an eight or 10-foot fence around this facility. And their patients get out. They're in my front yard, a severely impacted individual. I went, I brought him back. It said, yeah, we're so understaffed, we can't watch everybody. I go, well, this is a secured facility. You have alarms. It's such a nice day. We have the alarms turned off and the doors open. I go, what? So this is not right. They're ruining the neighborhood. There's no pride of ownership. It's a business. Their yard, their trash, the speeding, it's got to stop. And we're looking for you for help. Like Craig brought out, a surprise inspection from the state showed them to be non-compliant. And, and that's it. Please join Dom in getting this on your agenda so we can find a resolution to this problem. Thank you.
Next in chambers, Mickey Luna.
Thank you, Madam Chair and members of the supervisors. I'm Mickey Luna, president of the Latino Coalition of San Benito County, who has existed in San Benito County for 36 years. I come to you just to report that we were invited to Washington DC for Latino Advocacy Days for honoring and commemorating Hispanic Heritage Month. We felt honored and very lucky to have even been considered. But there was 10 residents and members of the Latino Coalition of San Benito County that went to Washington DC. I can tell you that our work there continues. I mean, there was just a lot of different departments that came to us. And we were in a group of pretty close to about 55 people because they wanted to keep it a smaller group. But let me tell you, we actually met with Senator Alex Padilla's office for over an hour regarding farm worker housing. Congressman Zoe Lofgrens and her staff, and they even took us on a Capitol tour. We did, we spoke with them at length. We were hosted by the Federal Association of Hispanic Organizations where actually we met a lot of people that represented Secretary, Health Secretary Javier Becerra, Vice President Kamala Harris. And then we were on to the different departments that we, that came to the White House where we met for, I can tell you, for maybe like two hours. And I'm honored to say that in that big table at the White House, 24 chairs where, where people could sit, we're there. Out of the 24 chairs, eight were from San Benito County, sitting at the chair, facing the agencies, facing the departments on gun violence, on mental health, on behavior health, on administration, on comment, the new administration initiative on gun violence. We were there on the impact on the Inflation Reduction Act, economic empowerment. There was directors from the White House facing us. The DACA initiative, that was so important to us because we took it from Hollister and San Benito County to them at the table and they listened, and they listened. And let me tell you, the people that we encountered, the people that were supportive of us, were people that understood the need of a rural community, a rural Latino populated, you know, community. And let me tell you, I was so honored to have been contacted by the White House to say, one of your own is here and they don't want you to leave without meeting her. And I'm glad to say that one of our young women from Hollister is at the White House and she's in contact with us. So thank you very much.
Thank you so much.
Next, Anitra Gomez.
Good morning, Madam Chair and members of the board. Good morning, all. I'm just here to also talk a little bit about our trip to Washington DC. I am part of Latino Coalition of San Benito County. I'm the co-chair, but my passion is the scholarship chair for our local students. And just like Mickey referenced, we met with so many wonderful people. We did have a White House briefing. We also met at the Dirksen Building in the, in the Capitol and we were briefed on, on Wi-Fi for all in the nation and what they're doing for rural communities. We were also briefed on gun violence in regards to mass shootings and what Team Enough is doing for all communities across the nation. And we were also briefed on our DACA numbers throughout the nation and California being the state with the most DACA students and status and what that would mean to our nation, not to California and not to Texas as the second state with the most DACA students, but as a nation and what type of impact it would have if all of these people were to be deported. It would be, it would create some hardships in our economy. And to have that brief to us on a national level in Washington DC is, is, is just something that is very impactful. But I'd like to kind of revert back to the farm worker housing. We were able to meet with Senator Alex Padilla and his staff for over an hour. And instead of calling it a meeting, I'd just really like for all of you to really understand that it wasn't a meeting, it was a collaboration. We had staff members that were just very impacted by our comments. We were also impacted by their comments. But we really were able to really emphasize the needs of our rural community and we represented San Benito County proudly. Thank you.
Thank you for sharing.
Next, Barbara Schneider.
Good morning, Madam Chair and supervisors. My name is Barbara Snyder. I live in San Benito County on the north property line of Anderson Homes Detention Basins A and B. Hopefully by now you have read my neighbor's letter to you asking to reopen the contract or renegotiate Santana Ranch specific plan for open space slash buffer zone or a park for the neighborhood. I'm here to ask you to stop Anderson Homes from premature grading of Phase 9 until the site plan is approved by the planning department and seen by at least the neighborhood so that we know what's coming and perhaps make a change. The plans for this parcel has changed over the years, many times. According to planning, the new revised site plan has not been approved. We, the neighborhood, have been asking for open space slash buffer zone over this parcel for the last two years. Not all of you have gotten all of our letters and requests. We were waiting for the informal presentation on the Santana Ranch drainage to present the latest letter to all of you. The presentation continues to be postponed. This is, in my opinion, on purpose through the planning department because they always side with Anderson Homes. So the purpose was to give Anderson Homes the advantage. Well, now they have it. They've started grading a subdivision ahead of approval and we deserve to be heard before the grading of the property. The state has required and approved Detention Basin B to be enlarged and deepened to handle the amount of water from portions of the subdivision. Basin A is not approved yet. The only dirt that should be moved at this time should be for the retrofit of Detention Basin B. The rest of the property should be left undeveloped until my neighbors and I, and can review the development plans. I have been asking for both planning and the, I've been talking with both planning and our board representative to see what we can do to preserve a buffer zone between our rural properties and Santana Ranch. New subdivisions all include planned open space. This was a plan a long time ago. It needs to be revised. Please give us a chance to negotiate and try to preserve open space or a park for the subdivision, which is sorely needed. Stop the premature grading of houses. Please give my neighborhood a chance to work with the board and the planning on revising the plan around the detention basins between the two and, and behind it as well. I have 114 signatures and it doesn't sound like very much, it's not a thousand, but they're right there, ground zero on the fence line. Thank you.
Next I have Bridget Baumann.
Hi, good morning. Good morning, Madam Chair. Good morning, Board of Supervisors. I'm here to talk about Santana Ranch. I can only tell you what Barbara Snyder said. I can only agree with her. You should have seen the flooding on Fairview, this faulty retention basin caused. It was, created a terrible hazardous condition on Fairview. It even flooded a mobile home park. This is an extremely dangerous situation. I hope this will not occur again. I heard of a woman, she drives a little hybrid, you know. She said she was really, really scared when she saw the flooded water. So that's one, that's one thing I wanted to tell you about. We had three atmospheric rivers coming through in San Benito County. We don't know what the weather will be. This can happen again. Please make our community safe. And I also want to say about Santana Ranch, I lived there. I moved there seven years ago. Here's the project description. There were, on the plan, there were three parks and a linear park. I've been there for seven years. There are no parks. There's only a park by the school. It's like, please hold Anderson Homes accountable. He's just building, building, selling expensive homes. And we, we really need those parks and we need more buffer zones. What they're doing to the, the community next, like with Barbara, is just terrible. And then you, on Fairview, the traffic is just, I ride my bike across, you should follow me, driving a bike across Sunny Slope and Fairview. I mean, I try to drive there as fast as I can. It's, I feel so unsafe. And by the way, there's also ranch with Santana. Board of Supervisors also approved this in 2010. It's 700 kids also on this, nearby this community, also facing Fairview. Every day, there's a lot of traffic. Kids are having to cross Fairview and Sunny Slope. So please make this a safer community. And, and again, you know, Anderson Homes is selling these homes for, by now they're running 700,000 to 900,000 without upgrades. And the community pays a lot of property taxes and what we get, traffic. And now, what do we get? A landfill expansion now coming up. This will be discussed tomorrow and over the next week. It's an insult. I talked to so many families. They, they all have little kids. We're going to be all exposed to landfill gas. You're polluting our air. Please stop this. This is just insane what's happening in, in San Benito County.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Next we have Maureen Nelson.
Good morning, Madam Chair, council members. My name's Maureen Nelson. I live in Santana Ranch also. I want to talk about the 2010 building approval for Santana Ranch. At that time, as Bridget has said, there were five parks designed, three small parks within the community, two of which are in where there's houses currently built. The houses have been built in those two park areas for the last seven to five years. Clearly, Anderson Homes was not putting in those two parks. The third park is still in areas that are not yet developed. There's a large park that has been completed. Thank you so much, Anderson Homes, for at least fulfilling one of the 18.3 acres of parkland that you promised, that you told this, the Board of Supervisors for approval of their permitting. It has not been fulfilled. You need to hold Anderson Homes to their accord. Housing was put on hold development because of the water retention basin, which is alongside homeowners' properties, acreage, farmland, grazing land. It flooded. The detention basin has not been updated, repaired, and made to code. Yet grading has now resumed. Building has now resumed. How does Anderson get away with defying what was put into writing needed to be done? You, I plead with you to please hold true to your word. You asked for something to be done? Please make sure it gets done before they move forward with their grading, building, and otherwise destruction of the adjoining properties. Okay, let's go on to the landfill. Here's an image from the draft environmental impact report. Does it show Santana Ranch here? This is from 2021 publication. Santana Ranch has been in housing for the past eight years. I have lived in my home for four years. We're not shown here. Why? Interesting. Yet the landfill is there. So I think that's a little deceptive and the county has allowed that to happen. You oversee the draft EIR and now the final EIR again. Housing is not shown. Heatherwood is not shown. I find that a little appalling. So the landfill opened in 1968. The county ran it. In 2005, Waste Solutions stepped in and took operation of the landfill. In 2013, it went from 500 tons to 1,000 tons. Part of the deal was a backdoor that prior member, Mark Medina, instigated and allowed to take money from the enterprise fund to use to balance the budget for the county. And then the landfill operator, Waste Solutions, paid back that enterprise fund. Dirty money. We need to stop. Thank you for your time.
Next I have Donald Vick.
Good morning. My name's Donald Vick. I live at 41 Laurel Court in District Number One. I wish to thank the Chair and the Board of Supervisors for this opportunity to bring a concern to you from the homeowners of Longacre Estates. We ask you to assure that the floodwater from Santana Ranch be contained on the property of Santana Ranch. Anderson Homes rerouted floodwater that that previously had crossed into a drainage north of Hillcrest Street into a basin on its property, which is good, but it was insufficient to hold it. Excess water drains through a pipe onto Fairview Road. Additionally, Anderson Homes routed more floodwater to the, from the development to another basin, Basins A and B, which floods over a cement dam into the Snyder Ranch. The water from both floods converge at one point, the intersection of Santa, I'm sorry, of Long, of Fairview and Mansfield Streets. It's right over my back fence. It then flows across Fairview into our neighborhood, Longacre's Estates, with custom homes on one-acre lots. This year's floodwater was strong enough to tear up the roadbed. It blocked the drainage pipe at the intersection with road gravel. To clean up the mess, the road crew had to cut a hole in Mansfield Street so water could bypass the drain pipe. The road crew shoveled up enough gravel to be as tall as the three men who dug it up. Many homes were threatened, and several homes sustained significant property damage. Homeowners have gathered more than 100 signatures to ask you to stop Anderson Homes from building more homes until it can guarantee it that its neighbors will be protected from their floods. We also ask for a larger buffer zone. They offer 25 feet, which is the length of my kitchen floor, as a buffer zone on their northern boundary. Perhaps a park with grass and trees where children can play to preserve the quality of life that we have in our neighborhood. Thank you for your consideration. We ask you to protect us. Keep Anderson Homes floodwater on Santana Ranch rather than sending it all into my neighborhood. Thank you very much.
Next, I have Tammy Aviles.
Good morning, Madam Chair, Supervisors. I'm Tammy Aviles with the Friends of the San Benito County Free Library. Just want to express thank you for your continued support for the library and its many services. Wanted to let you know that the Friends are having a book sale this Saturday at the bookshed behind the library, as well as next week is recognized as National Friends of Libraries Week, where we will have, throughout the day, you can bring your children to come spin the wheel and win a, you know, cool prize. But just, you know, thank you for your continued support as we work with the expansion and, you know, providing the continued services and resources that the library does. Thank you.
Tammy, real quick, what time on Saturday?
Book sale is nine to noon.
Nine to noon, okay, thank you so much.
And I have Sandy Patterson.
Good morning, Madam Chair, Board of Supervisors and audience. My name is Sandy Patterson-Jamark, and I want to agree with the folks that live in these areas where it was flooded. I live in the Mobile Home Park that was flooded. You need to shut Anderson Homes down. They're not in compliance with the agreements that they signed with the county. Step up and do what needs to be done. You're putting people's lives in danger. My husband was disabled. What if I couldn't get him out? If it was so flooded? Who am I going to call? The Sheriff's Department's busy. Am I going to call you? I don't think so. So you need to shut them down. I don't care what money they're giving you. You need to shut them down. The other is on the McGlavry Road. I live in the Mobile Home Park. I have my horse on Lone Tree. I go out twice a day, and this place is dangerous. The person that owns that facility is a nurse at Hazel Hawkins Hospital, and her daughter runs it. Nobody's trained there. One of the most dangerous people out there with the Sheriff's Department had to go out on, across from where I keep my horse at 8:30 Lone Tree Road. They had to stop him. This man throws rocks. He knocks on doors. He's, and they just sit and watch in their cars. I have had these people riding down the roads on their bikes, not supervised, know nothing. And they have been on our, my, where I have my horse. I have to have a lock and a chain to keep my animal safe. And if it comes to more than that, guess what? If I have to take care of it, and I, if I don't have the response time from the Sheriff's Department, I can take care of it myself. But you need to take care of the roads. And why are we spending money on roads to go into San Juan Batista when we haven't even taken care of the roads in District One? Lover's Lane, Fairview, McCloskey, Lone Tree? You can't even see, there's no lines, no reflectors, no nothing. Where's the money for Measure G and Measure M, folks? Yeah, it goes into general fund, and you spend it wherever. Put it into the roads, and before, I'm sorry, San Juan Batista can wait. You need to take care of these people that have been here longer. Thank you.
And I have Elias Salinas.
Good morning, Madam Chair and Supervisors. First, I'd like to start off with, Mark Medina is a man of good moral character and has never done any backdoor deals. San Benito County has an ordinance with regards to signs, and there are some signs out there on San Benito County roads and on private property where the folks have not come to San Benito County to get permits. This is, these are not campaign signs. The weekend of the fair, I think it was last weekend, 25 was flooded with signs for the, for the people that are against the Strada Verde project. Nothing's even going on with Strada Verde, and they spent a lot of money on those signs, on 25 and on different corners. I noticed they're down, but there are, there are signs, they're big yellow signs that say the, the "Don't Dump on San Benito County." They're still up there. They don't have permits, and they should be taken down. There is a San Benito County ordinance that states why those signs should not be up. And if they're on private property, then get a permit. If they are on county roadways, they need to come down. I've asked for this before, and I know it takes a while for it to get done, but I come, I want to come to the board. There is a big, there is a big issue, and it's not new to you with regards to the retention ponds. There is a history with Santana Ranch project. One of them was the, they, they stopped them from getting any permits on, until they, they had, there was an agreement that they were supposed to put a stoplight at, on Sunny Slope and Valley View Road. And they finally did it, but it took a while, and it took, and it took the county to stop from giving them permits until that sign, the, the light was up. There are food trucks on, on San Benito County property at Union and Siena Ga, and I'm all about economic development and people making money, but if you don't have a permit, they've got to stop because they're competing with people who go through the permit process. Real quick, I have an individual who's going to get mad at me, but this person has been a member of the Planning Commission, is a member, has been a member of LAFCO. He is very well-known by all boards in San Benito County, goes out there and does his diligent work. And I am, he's a personal mentor to myself and to other people, and I would ask the San Benito County Board of Supervisors consider a proclamation for his commitment to San Benito County. Thank you. Oh, and that would be for Richard Benton Court.
I have no further public comment.
Thank you. Okay, do we have any public comment for consent agenda?
If you'd like to make a comment in chambers, please provide a speaker card, and on Zoom, please press star nine or the raised hand icon. And I do have Ms. Elias Salinas.
Consent item 1.6 and 1.12. With regards to 1.6, I think that would, this is a really great idea, and I would like to know, the, the public should be aware of how many individuals are, are coming to this program, or how many have already been? What is the anticipation? Are there some there now? I've been advocating for internships over at the, at the behavioral health, and I think this is, this would be really great. And with regards to 1.12, the approval of the undersheriff, I would like that to be pulled by some, one of you so that it could be public and that the individual can be out here, and the public can know who the individual is when they see him on video. Thank you.
And I have no other public comment.
Thank you. Any Board Member, Supervisor, Colonel?
I'd like to pull 1.17.
Okay, thank you. Supervisor Zenger, do you have anything?
Yes, 1.8, 1.13, and I don't, I don't want to pull 1.10 because I don't want to keep Sandy here all day, but I just want to say thank you for, for showing up at the meeting because she's on the, consigned to be pulled. I don't want to pull it though.
Okay, thank you. And so, just so, I want to make sure I have it correct. 1.13 and 1.8.
Correct.
Okay, thank you. Supervisor Cosmiki?
1.3.
1.3. Okay, that it?
Yep.
Okay, Supervisor Gonzalez?
I, I will pull item number 1.12 for the reasons that Elias stated. We all know who he is, but I want the community to know who he is and recognize him as well.
Okay, all right. Can I get a motion to approve all of the other items on consent then, please?
So move.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? So 5-0. I think at this time, let's go ahead and take a quick 5, 10-minute break.
It's been sitting there, it's going to be cold.
I was watching out for you.
It's going to be cold.
Okay, I'm going to pull the meeting back to order, please. Okay, I'd like to do something a little bit out of order. I'd like to hear item from consent, item 112, the sheriff's item. Just out of respect, so that he can get back to, to work and doesn't have to wait here all day. So we'll just make the exception with that item. And then we'll do the rest of the consent after. If that's okay with the rest of the board and, okay. All right, so let's go here, go ahead and hear item 112.
Good morning, Madam Chair, members of the board. Henny Ring again with Human Resources Administration. Today's item is a, to approve and update the undersheriff job specification and the salary for the San Benito County Sheriff's Office and reclassify Captain Tom Keelon as the undersheriff. Let me give you a little bit of the background. In anticipation of a commander position retirement in the sheriff's office in the jail location and regarding additional managerial oversight in the overall operations of the sheriff's office, the sheriff has requested Human Resources to update the undersheriff classification and review the salary structure. The undersheriff job spec has been inactive and has not been utilized since a previous administration. Therefore, the review of the job duties as well as the salary range is necessary. It's been inactive. It was used with a previous administration, like I said. And with the last comp and class, class and comp study that was done, it was because it was inactive. It never moved within the salary range with the other positions of the county. So that's why we did, had to do the review. The undersheriff classification is under administrative direction of the sheriff to assist in the planning, organizing, managing, and providing direction and oversight for the functions and activities of the sheriff's office, including law enforcement and correction programs. Provides expert professional assistance to county management in areas of responsibility. Develops and implements goals, objectives, policies, procedures, work standards, and internal controls for subordinates. Motivates and provides for training and development of subordinate staff and performs related duties as assigned. The salary would be set at 15% above what the current sheriff's captain position is right now. Additionally, Human Resources has completed internal review. And this would be similar to what the assistant district attorney and the, to the district attorney in the, within the salary schedule. The undersheriff position previously has originally been in the law enforcement management group, same as with the sheriff's captain, and that would be unchanged. So that would still, stay the same. During the past year, since the election of Sheriff Taylor, the sheriff has been utilizing the working title of undersheriff. Captain Tom Keelon has been fulfilling that role. Captain Keelon has been assisting the sheriff by overseeing, directing, and participating in all activities of sheriff's office, including short-term and long-term planning, as well as the development and administration of developmental policies, procedures, and services. He has provided the sheriff in a variety of administrative management, supervisory, professional, technical, and administrative support to assist the sheriff's office as well as the county. I've worked closely with Captain Keelon on several projects, as well as the citizens of San Benito County. Therefore, the sheriff is requesting to reclassify Captain Keelon to the undersheriff classification. Staff recommendation is to approve and update the job specification for undersheriff and allocate 1.0 FTE of undersheriff classification in the sheriff's office. Approve and set the salary for undersheriff at 15% above the sheriff's captain classification in the county's class and pay plan. And reclassify Tom, Captain Tom Keelon to the undersheriff classification as per personnel rule 6.2.2. E, which is a reclassification. And then direct HR staff to set the salary according to the personnel rules of 6.7.7 following, pay following promotion. The job specification for undersheriff was included in your packet for your review as well. And if there are any questions, I am available for that, as well as the sheriff, as well as Tom is here as well.
Thank you, Henny. I'm going to turn it over, Supervisor Gonzalez.
Thank you for explaining that. We all know Tom or Captain Keelon, and I just wanted to make sure the community knows him as well. And so, thank you.
I think it's just, I don't think there's any questions or really comments from the board or opposition or anything of that sort. I think it's just an opportunity for Captain Keelon to go ahead and introduce himself. And that's really.
No, I appreciate that. I just wanted to thank the board for hearing this and thank you for working with me to make this happen. It's very important. Fifty-five of the 58 sheriff's offices have an undersheriff or an equivalent of an assistant sheriff. It's very important for me to have this at-will position and for Captain Keelon to, to fulfill that. The only thing that I do want to get on the recording, just to make sure that we're on par. He will be in the LEM, the Law Enforcement Management. He will fall under that MOU. Undersheriff is currently not specified in that MOU because that was an inactive position. And I just want to make sure that we get on the record that the undersheriff would fall under that memorandum of understanding for LEM and that he would be afforded the rights of a sheriff's captain that are specified in the MOU. That's the intent. I just wanted to make sure that I said it out loud. And then I'd like to introduce, hopefully now, undersheriff Tom Keelon. Not just a working title, but the real deal. Thank you.
Thank you, Board and Madam Chair. Good morning. Morning to the public. My name is Tom Keelon. I've been in this county for 33 years. Half that time, I worked for the city of Hollister. The second half, I've been with the sheriff's office. I look forward to the opportunity. We're doing a lot of great things at the sheriff's office and we hope to continue that. So I just want to take this minute to say thank you. And I will do what I can to support our office and the people of San Benito County.
Madam Chair?
Yeah, go ahead.
Just wanted to say congratulations, undersheriff. Just, you're well-deserved and well-respected. And we certainly do need, you know, if Sheriff Taylor's out of town or something, we get, if crisis happens, you got to have somebody to step in that knows how to be the sheriff. And you're certainly that person. So appreciate it. Thank you.
Go ahead.
Just saying congratulations. I, I'm really excited for you and the county in this position. And I think it's, it's a great addition. So just keep us safe and thank you so much for all you do.
Thank you, ma'am.
Yeah, thank you so much and congratulations. Would someone like to make a motion to make it official?
Move to approve per staff recommendation.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Five zero. Thank you very, very much. Congratulations.
Congratulations.
Okay, now we will go into regular agenda. Item 2.1, adopt a resolution of intent to approve annexation number 10, tax zone 13. Steve Lu.
All right, good morning, Madam Chair, Board of Supervisors, members of the public. I'm Steve Lu, Public Works Administrator. And I've just created a few slides, which are basically clips from the attachments to this item, just to refresh some folks on the board. Because I think when this project was approved, none of these board members were actually elected yet. And so, just want to do a quick refresher and talk about CFDs. It'll be brief. And again, it's just pretty much clips from the actual attachments on the agenda item. So, back in 2012, November, the county accepted and signed a development agreement with a project called Fairview Corners. That development is allowed to construct up to 220 single-family homes. I'll show you a little exhibit of where that's at in a minute. And then in July of 2018, that project submitted their tentative map, which is a planning document, which shows the game plan for the project and entitles them to proceed to develop the project in substantial compliance with that map. And that brings us to today. The project owners have signed an intent to annex their project into the county's CFD. And what that means is they are essentially agreeing to have their project and future lots of that project have an assessment on their lots to pay for, what they've chosen to do is to pay for essentially law enforcement services, excuse me, I should say, emergency responders, as well as county admin costs. And that fee is going to be approximately $900 per home. So they're doing this process in compliance with the development agreement from 2012. And I'll show you the tentative map, just to, as a refresher course. Again, since none of this board was really around back in that time. And so, on the left of this exhibit is Fairview Road. Road north is up and kind of the blank open space area at the bottom of the image is where Gavlin College is going to be expanding. So this project is adjacent to the college. And so, so far, they've, the, the project team thinks they're developing perhaps about half of what you're seeing here as kind of a phased development. But they need to annex entire project into our CFD as part of their conditions of approval in the development agreement from 2012. So, just a quick refresher for folks that maybe don't know. A CFD, essentially, it provides a source of funding to have different public services implemented. And some subdivisions will have their HOA manage and fund those services. But at a minimum, most of our projects will have law enforcement and emergency responders be funded through their CFD funds. And that's what this project has chosen to do. The remaining services for the project will actually be managed by the project's HOAs, such as streets, parks, and other public amenities. And so, this is step one of that process. The owners have provided the required documentation. And now we have to wait approximately 30 days and then have a public hearing to officially annex the property into the CFD.
Thank you, Steve. Do we have any public comment?
If you'd like to make a comment in chambers, please provide a speaker card. And on Zoom, please press star nine or the raised hand icon. And I have no public comment.
Thank you. Any questions or comments from the board? Supervisor Kosmiki?
Yeah, real quick, Madam Chair, thank you. I just want to make it extra, extra clear for everyone that this board did not approve this housing project. I would not have supported this housing project in this particular location. And just want to put that on the record. And this, we're essentially just assessing a tax. So, thank you.
Thank you for that clarification. Any other comments or question? Okay, what is the will of the board?
I move to approve.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Five zero. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, item 2.2, receive informational presentation on the county's 150th and provide staff direction.
All right, so, good morning, Board and Chair. My name is Dulce Alon. My name is Dulce Alonso, Principal Administrative Analyst here in the admin office. I want to thank the time and commitment from both Supervisor Dom and Bee Gonzalez on working on the ad hoc to put forth some of these ideas and brainstorm on how we would celebrate the county's one-fiftieth. So a little history, February twelfth of eighteen seventy-four is San Benito is the official date that the county established when it separated from Monterey County. In that era, that was very common for counties to generate from separating from others. But really, the purpose of separating was to establish more local control, become more efficient, responsive, and really tailor to the locals' populations' needs, kind of take law enforcement into local control, land use taxation, and provide public services. So that kind of kicked off our establishing on February twelfth of eighteen seventy-four. So really, the county's one-fiftieth celebration is significant as it provides an occasion to honor our history, build community relationships, reflect on past accomplishment, and really inspire to how, what we want to see for our future. It bridges the past, the present, and the future, and really we could highlight some of our history that's unique to our region. So through, through the ad hoc, we've discussed having various events, but the, so here are a list of events that occur, some occur in our county and some that would be brand-new. So the ones that are in bold would be the ones we, that are brand-new that we would take on. So proposed is four events. We would kick off the celebration of our county on February twenty-fourth at Historical Park in collaboration with a lot of stakeholders, and then following throughout the year, we would attend various events, kind of highlighted here. One that would be new would be like a dance night that we've been in discussion with San Benito Business Council and doing, like a train, a dance party downtown or a dance lessons. So there's more to come on specifics and logistics. We've also discussed having a float at the Saddle Horse Parade, which occurs downtown, creating a county paint night open to families and community, to the community. We've also discussed just having a booth at various events that are occurring, such as San Juan Day, Aroma Day, Red Ribbon Week run, and then also doing a float for each Hollister Downtown Association Light Parade. And then towards the end, we would close the ceremony or birthday celebrations. We discussed various options for closing, and we came up, I don't know if the ad hoc wants to add anything here, but they wanted something more accessible to the public where it wasn't restrictive to a certain category, and everybody could attend, and it was affordable. So that's kind of how the chili cook-off was developed there, but...
Dulce, if I may?
Yeah.
We wanted something of the western nature, since that's the epitome of San Diego County and our roots. We didn't want to do something elitist where only particular people could attend. We wanted to make sure that it'd be family-friendly, affordable, and we figured something like, you know, like the way the San Juan has its rib cook-off, it generates a lot of traffic and people attend, and it's a big family event. So we wanted something like that, and we figured we'd piggyback on some of these existing events and be there and kind of just celebrate the county, have some sort of table or something, you know, then maybe we can all be out there and kind of just, you know, represent the county. But I thought that the chili cook-off was a great idea, because we kind of compared that to what happens at Santa Cruz Beach Boardwalk and their clam chowder cook-off and their chili cook-off when they have that, and it just draws a lot of people, and so we were looking for a way to really include the community and families, but where it wasn't going to be cost-prohibited at all. And so, that was our conversation.
Thank you. So the one-fiftieth also is an opportunity for us to reflect, and I wanted to tie in our strategic plan because it is coming due to our five-year. So in 2025, we'll be adopting, hopefully, a new strategic plan, but this is an opportunity for us to reflect on how we envision our future priorities, what has been achieved by past, by a past board and the county, how can we improve, and what does the future hold? So the strategic plan, really looking at what it is and the vision of the community and the board to identify new opportunities, mitigate risk, optimize any, our limited resources, and ensure that everybody, everybody involved has a common overarching goals and objectives. So I just wanted to throw that in there, that it kind of ties in perfectly with our strategic plan updating, ties in with kind of the celebrations and reflections. So the other portion we've discussed is really education and awareness. We've discussed doing a coloring book that we could, we would develop, we've been in conversations with San Benito Arts Council on what the story we want to portray of the region and developing a short coloring book that we could give a lot of these, these events to the community. And another discussion was doing like a monthly articles that highlight the county's history, and we've been in discussions with Benito Link on them possibly taking that on and doing stories, one, a new one each month highlighting San Benito County's history. So we would touch a little bit on education there. We've also discussed how could we tie economic and tourism with our one-fiftieth, and we came up with the idea of highlighting a new region each month through social media and tying them into events that are already occurring, such as like the county fair, and different, different locations to visit and events that are occurring. So we saw an opportunity there to kind of boost our tourism in the region and really highlight any hidden gems that we do have. And then lastly, we discussed having a time capsule where we would preserve our moment for future generations, really so that the future can see, can open and get a glimpse of the past when it eventually gets open, and hopefully in another fifty years from now. So that's kind of the, the events that have been discussed took her, and we have developed logo, Monica, actually, I want to acknowledge her first. She started off the logo conversation, so when I came on board, we kind of continued it. So thank you, Monica, who is now with the city of Hollister. So I do have a few options and kind of wanted the board's direction and consideration. The committee liked two of the logos, and part of the discussion is if we want to use the logos to rebrand the county in the future, and we can drop the one-fiftieth. So for your consideration, that's there, and I'm looking for a direction and input from the board as a whole. So option one is a logo, and it has, it's been revamped, it has the one-fiftieth celebration on the bottom, anniversary. This is the same logo, just without the one-fiftieth ribbon on the bottom. And then logo B would really emphasize the one-fiftieth, and it's here, and it's more of a like patch-looking, and you can see what it looks like behind white and then behind black, and that is, that is all I have on that, but thank you.
And if I may add, the logo, we wanted to bring the logo to this board to make the decision, because neither Dom or I wanted to have the egg on our face, should you not approve it. So we're hoping that this is a collective decision, and again, and with the logo, the logo will be the decision, you know, by this board, but it'll be the image that emulates and recognizes, and everybody will see that it's the one-hundred-and-fiftieth celebration of the county, and we can't really do our marketing campaign without the logo, so that's kind of why we needed that and why we're having this presentation today. We need your input on which do you prefer, and I'll leave it to you all to discuss.
Thank you very much. Do you want to add anything before I open it up to public comment, since you were on the ad hoc as well?
I mean, I can just speak right after public comment.
Okay. All right, so is there, do we have any public comment on this item?
If you'd like to make a comment in chambers, please provide a speaker card, and on Zoom, please press star nine or the raised hand icon. And I have no public comment.
Thank you. Would you like to go first?
Yeah, thank you, yeah. Thank you for the presentation. Yeah, Supervisor Gonzalez sort of summed it up pretty well, I think, especially with what we were trying to do with a more inclusive event. You know, like I guess, I didn't go to the city's fancy event, but I heard it was very nice, but we want to do something that would be a little more accessible to everybody. And just to, just to comment, the time capsule, I have to, I'm anti-time capsule, just because it feels like we're copying the city, like verbatim, it feels like, just, so I got to throw that in there. Other than that, yeah, we just, like Supervisor Gonzalez said, we just kind of wanted to get the board's opinion on the logo. That's a big one, so that we can start the whole campaign and everything else, and we think that this is a good way to go about this whole thing. It's, I think, the most economically feasible as far as just tacking onto events that exist, rather than trying to do our own thing and spend a bunch of money, so that's just, that's just how we ended where we did. And yeah, like was mentioned, Benito Link is happy to work with us to a degree with the monthly articles that highlight the county history. I think that's huge. I think that'd be a great thing to do. I think that's great either way, so this is a great excuse to do that. That's, that's pretty much all I got.
Thank you. Supervisor Gonzalez, did you have anything you wanted to add?
We are having ongoing meetings, and we do have a meeting scheduled for this week just for the members in the community that I wonder why haven't they been included? They have been included, and as I said, the meetings are ongoing, and Dulce has been phenomenal since we lost Monica to the city, and so she just came right in, rolled her sleeves up, and got to work, and thank you for that, Dulce, and appreciate that. You and Gracie. Thank you.
Supervisor Cosmickey?
Thanks, Madam Chair. So first off, on the hundred thousand dollars, what was the amount that we had budgeted? Do we have a dollar amount that we actually have budgeted in the budget? Because I don't remember a specific hundred thousand dollar amount.
Yeah, so it was a hundred thousand, it was, well, one-thirty-five, and then thirty-five was for the employee appreciation, which we...
Oh, that's why, okay.
Which we pulled from. So it was a hundred thousand, and now it's seventy-seven thousand, because there's a consent item that, a portion from that is getting pulled to purchase a vehicle, but so it's dwindling down to, we now have seventy-seven thousand. So the proposed budget that I did prepare was for a hundred thousand, so there's some things we're going to have to look at and scale down to get to that.
Okay. Sorry.
Well, I'm sorry, I don't want to cut you off, Supervisor Cosmickey, but those are a few of my questions that I had was regarding the budget. There's a lot of dates there with regards to the in-kind funds, because there's also an in-kind piece of staff time and manning those events. So I just kind of wanted to get an idea if that was looked at, and then potentially any swag. We gave some swag out at the, at the fair, so there was some cost associated with that as well. So those are some of the questions I had with Dulce, but we thought it would be good with the chair to bring it up to the board, just have this open dialogue with you, and maybe I'm stealing your thunder, I don't know, but I apologize, but...
Oh, you're fine. Yeah, I was going to ask. It's all right.
Those are, those are my thoughts or my questions, too, so.
Yeah, so first off, I, you know, I appreciate, I have expressed some concerns previously just about costs. I do appreciate the committee and the thought that was put into it and the planning, and it's all positive. I just, just have a few logistical questions, then I'll get to my overall point. The twenty-five thousand for an opening ceremony seems like a lot of money to me. I'm not really quite sure what would entail needing twenty-five thousand dollars. I mean, we could hold an event and invite people down somewhere, and I just don't quite understand where that dollar amount's coming from, because that seems like a lot of money, and that maybe that's an area where you can look at potentially cutting back to reach your goal of the seventy-seven thousand, because twenty, I just don't see what we're trying to do for twenty-five thousand dollars. It seems like get together, have some speeches, maybe have some music, but twenty-five thousand dollars just seems like a lot.
Yeah, and we can definitely, the budget is not finalized in any way, and we're adjusting as needed, so.
And I would echo the same thing for the chili cook-off. I just would like to know, like, what, those are dollar amounts, so what is the thinking as far as why those specific dollar amounts are necessary?
There's permitting fees if we, so for the opening ceremony, we wanted to get like swag, have a band possibly out there, have different vendors out at the, at the Historical Park, but we could definitely look at that and scale it down. So it was more, there was more allocated to the opening and closing ceremony, and I think we, we would, part of that included purchasing items that we would give out, and those are kind of, they range in price, so.
They refer to it as swag, but it's, you know, the little souvenirs that we'll be able to give away to the community that'll have the logo and, you know, mark the occasion, and there's that initial investment.
Yeah, and typically bands do charge a little bit more for, so that's why those, because we're putting on the full event, were a little higher.
Okay, yeah, and I would, hopefully, we could find some local bands that have pride in the community that maybe don't want to charge us an arm and a leg, that maybe, you know, I can think of some offhand that would maybe do it for free, just for the publicity, so just let's keep that in mind. And then I am also concerned about staff time. That doesn't seem like that was incorporated potentially into the budget, and I would just, there's a lot going on here throughout the year, so I imagine the hours are going to pile up and that this is, you know, potentially going to be in the tens of thousands of dollars when it comes to staff time. And I just have to reiterate, you know, again, I am all about community. I love this community, I love the events, but we have a very limited staff, and I, you know, we're trying to get a lot done, we're pushing you guys to get a lot done. There's more to do than you can do already, so I'm very concerned about the overall picture of staff time and how we can potentially severely limit the amount of staff time that's spent on this, because if I'm choosing between Dulce or Ray or anyone else in the audience working on this versus working on the projects that we are really pushing to get done, I am a hundred percent siding on working on the projects and the initiatives over this. And it's, again, nothing against the one-hundred-fiftieth, but that's just where I'm at as far as priorities go. And I would like a calculation of staff time. I think that's, that for the right of the public to have, to shine the light on taxpayer dollars, I really think it's absolutely essential that we have some sort of calculation of the amount of staff time, if not at the beginning, at the end of the event, and I will go on the record again, saying that I, you know, I did not support this overall budget and the extent that we're going with this, so that when this is all said and done, and you're going to come and say there was X amount of staff time spent, I, as one supervisor, can say that I did not support that. The Benito Link part, I'm going to put on my journalism hat for a second here. You know, if I'm Benito Link, I'm, you know, I'm saying thank you, but no thank you, because there's a serious ethical conflict from their side when it comes to, they're expected to report on us and be objective about the county, to be critical of the county, to call us out when we do things that we shouldn't do, and if we're handing money over to them for a service, it's just inappropriate from a journalistic standpoint for their side, and I also would say from our side, I just don't think paying a news organization this amount of money to write fluff articles or whatever it is, you know, PR basically, I think if you're going to do that, you need to, basically, we need to find somebody outside of an actual local journalism organization, a freelancer, or somebody that just can come in and write the articles, because there's just, to me, there's just a serious conflict on both sides there. And then as far as the logo, I did give suggestions. I thought having a little biker going across the little roadway... I thought having a little biker going across the little roadway would be cool considering our history with motorcycles here that I think, you know, unfortunately is being shuffled to the side at the city of Hollister, but I certainly think that the motorcycle culture in this community should, should be one of the most poignant pieces that we celebrate when we're doing logos and all these other things. So I'm really hoping we can get a biker. I also suggested to Dulce a little condor flying in the air above the Pinnacles as another emblematic piece. I thought the mission as much as, hey, I represent San Juan and I love the mission, I got married outside of the mission, but I think it's a little too big. I think we could minimize the size of the mission a little bit. And then I would just, if there's space issues, personally, if there's too much clutter because sometimes you can have too much clutter in a logo, I would drop the actual map, the geographic map of the county. I just don't see any value to that. I don't think that really provides any sort of feeling of pride. That's just my two cents and I would say if we're stuck on these things that we might want to just see if we can just, as quickly as possible, maybe just form a little committee of community residents, three, four, five people that can give some input and some final recommendations just so there may be some outside eyes on it. Other than that, appreciate all the work the committee did and thank you very much.
Thank you for your suggestions because that's exactly, we kind of wondered if we needed to minimize the mission, not for necessarily the reasons that you stated, but, you know, just what it represents in terms of Native Americans and, and that whole line of conversation. I love the idea about the motorcycle. Were you looking at for the logo, on logo A or logo B? Because I only see one road on logo A.
Well, whichever one had a, somewhere on there, I'll figure it out, but yeah, there was one of them where it looked like, I think it was grass in the farm area.
Okay, yeah, that was logo A then, okay. So motors and the condor, that's great too because that ties in with Pinnacles. Yeah. And as I said, we are having a meeting this week and so we'll make sure we bring those, those concerns up with the, you know, with the residents. So any other concerns from the supervisors?
Supervisor Cora, would you like to?
Okay, um, I want to thank not just staff because I know this is a lot of work, but also the ad hoc for all of your efforts on this. This is a really tough job. I'm grateful that I'm not on this ad hoc, so thank you so much for taking on this challenge. I really want the focus of the celebration to be on the history of San Benito County in going into South County and visiting some of these areas that I have not been to. The stories that I'm getting out of the history of South County, I mean, we had a little community in an area I didn't even... A new Ida? No, I haven't, no, there's another whole little community out there that used to have a hotel and, you know, right next to the school is... You know what school? It's on the hill and then they built the new school down below, Willow, is it? Not Willow Grove. Jefferson, that's it, thank you. Okay, sorry. My, I apologize for not having the right name. Anyhow, highlighting these old stories from our residents and I don't, I don't want to say old timers, but it's, the seniors have so much history about our community. I really want that to be a focal point of this event. That's my big feedback. Especially when you're planning, if you're doing booths, having that history available so that you can share it. Because one of the things I've learned in economic development that I didn't know is people in, when they come to San Benito County, yeah, they're coming for, you know, the bike rally or for the, you know, the fair or for the wine trail, whatever it may be, the chili cook, or the, not chili cook-off, but the cook-off, the rib cook-off in San Juan. When they come here, they always are like, we'd love to hear the history. How did this little town become this little town? How did, you know, the Pinnacles become a national park? How, just having that history, I think, would be very educational, not just for the community, but for us as board members, because I'm learning something new every single day about the history of our community. So stories that come from our residents, I like the idea of bringing residents in on the logo and include the history with that to get another kind of take on our community. Have we thought about working with nonprofits and community groups on this?
We are.
We are, okay. So I think making sure that we incorporate that in with, you know, I agree, we need to limit staff time. We don't want this to be all you're working on for a year. We, there are so many other higher priorities I support, that we need to keep staff time limited and really lean on our community-based organizations and volunteers to help us with this. I'm all about the dance, especially anything to do with country western dancing. I am all about it, doesn't have to be line dancing, all about country western couples dancing, so I'm a big supporter of that one. When it comes to the logo, I agree, we do not need to have a map of the county on it. I think that's an excellent suggestion from Supervisor Cosmickey. I do appreciate you bringing up the mission. I didn't want to bring that up and say it was too big. It's a little too big, sorry. I think the Pinnacles really need to be the highlight and that's not because it's in South County, it's because it's such a big draw to our community, for our community. I think the Pinnacles really need to be highlighted. I love that you can see the detail of the row crops. I think because of our egg community, our current logo does not really emphasize the, you know, when I'm looking at the one up on the screen right now, you don't really see the row crops, which is such an important part, so I really like that touch. I'm open to the bike thing, you know, that's, I think of motorcycle rally, I think of the Hollister. So if that's something that the board wants to incorporate, okay, I'm all about the condor. That, I think, is a great addition. Besides that, I would be going more with an A versus a B when it comes to the logos. And I think that covered all my notes. And, or, since you were saying permits and fees, since we are a public entity, any chance we can have people get an exception to permits and fees?
We're forgetting with the city, so hopefully, hopefully some of the costs would be a lot less.
Okay, yeah. And I agree that cutting the price on the opening ceremony and having it be more affordable, that would be where I would, the cook-off, I'm not really sure how you're envisioning that, so I'll let the ad hoc decide on that one, but I agree, I think the opening ceremony is a little pricey.
Madam Chair, just real quick, Supervisor, because Mickey, did you mention if you liked A or B as far as logo, like the general shape? Because that's kind of when we want to...
I think it was A.
...iron that down first. Okay, just want to make sure.
If they could put it up, I have it up on there.
A had the map and B did not.
He's a, the circle.
Yeah, is the circle, yeah.
He'll put it up right now.
Is it okay if I go?
So I'm leaning A, thank you.
Okay, and there were four options up there, so, so are we talking just the circle? Are we talking about the, okay, so we're looking at A, so the little square rectangle at the bottom that shows 150th? So what's your preference on that?
So I guess, do we want to use this to, after the 150th to replace our current logo if we're custom, yes, okay.
Well, for me, yeah. And if you, I'm sorry, Madam Chair, as long as...
Go ahead.
Maybe if we do have a biker, you probably would need like at least a little strip so he's not driving through, he or she's not riding through the grass. And then the only other thing I forgot as long as I'm speaking, the county fair, if we're going to do events, again, I think that this is, this is a lot for staff time and everything, but if we're gonna have an event in October, I would think the county fair would be appropriate, thank you.
I like that you keep bringing up the staff time because it was our hope in our conversation from the ad hoc, that the supervisors would all contribute some time so that would alleviate staff time where they won't have to do so much.
I appreciate that and I would be willing to give my time. So first of all, thank you to everybody that's been working on this. Thank you to our ad hoc members. I'm struggling with this one and I apologize, but I used to do a lot of events in my former job and this is more than a full-time job that we're asking staff to do. And so I just don't know, I feel like we're spreading ourselves so thin. I guess I would rather see us do one thing and execute it really, really well, or maybe two things, but really reduce it. I mean, between the events you listed here and then the, I believe there was, then highlight local attractions, between the two, we're looking at what, I don't know, 15, 20, almost? I just don't know how feasible this really is to do and I guess, I kind of agree with Supervisor Cosmickey. I think we just have such, so much issues and so many things of importance that I guess I really think we need to focus on what is important. I think this is great and I want to highlight the 150th. I just don't want to spread ourselves so thin that all of a sudden what 2024 becomes is us just highlighting the 150th and not getting anything done. So I'm, I'm kind of struggling with that. I don't know that the budget is enough, to be honest with you. I know how much it costs to put on events, I know how much it costs to buy swag. We did not buy enough swag for the fair, right? We were out in day one and a half. And so are we really, did we allocate enough money here to really execute, again, the thing fully and done well? I just, you know, if our name's gonna be attached to it, I would rather people be really impressed with what the product we're able to put out than a bunch of mediocre things. I, I really would like to focus on locations that are out, you know, that are in the unincorporated area, the county, the historical park, Bellato, Pinnacles, the Anza Trail, just to name a few. I agree with Supervisor Coro, I think it should be a historical event, possibly partnering, looking at, you know, looking at all of the different nonprofits out there. I'm looking, you know, the historical society is, you know, would they be willing to help us with anything?
They're involved with the conversation.
Yeah, we've been working with them.
Um, you know, I think we really need to celebrate our agricultural heritage. That's what this county was kind of founded on. We were the hay capital of the world. Could we do something with hay rides? I don't know. You know, could we just do a simple like, hey, it's the county's 150th, we're doing a nature walk. I saw you'd had the moonlight walk at, like the Anza Trail. I think just little things like that, that we could coordinate, walk with your supervisors, that type of a thing that wouldn't cost a lot of money and a lot of staff time to put together. Are there any possible grants that might be available? When you talk about this coloring book, are there any like art grants that might be available that we could help fund some of those things? I, I would be in support of having like a proclamation, doing some sort of a gathering, really celebrating the history of the community, kind of celebrating our agricultural heritage and then really moving on and focusing on the issues of importance. You know, so I'm sorry, I feel like I'm negative with it, but I want us to be really realistic. I would, I like logo option A, the circle without the year. And, you know, if we're doing the Pinnacles for kind of tourism and that's kind of what we're getting known for, I'm just curious, I love that we have the agricultural fields in there, but should we be putting like grapes or something like that as a possibility? Let's see, I will tell you, so there was a book that was done a few years ago by the county office of education when Tim Foley was superintendent, that was all about the history of San Benito County. I don't know if they have any more of those books available. I know I got a couple of boxes when I did a workshop years ago for something and I wanted to highlight the history of our county, so that may be something. I definitely have the book and I can bring it in and, and I can, you know, the ad hoc, you guys are welcome to use it. As well as I have some other, what is it, West of the Gabolins or something like that? I've got, I've got a few books that focus on kind of local that I'd be happy to, to share. So, yeah, and I would just, anyways, I'm just gonna reserve my comments to that, but I really appreciate all of your work. I don't mean to be negative, I just, I'm really concerned about how much money and how much time this is really gonna take, so.
Madam Chair?
Yeah.
Just some, if I can have some follow-ups, just because we gotta keep working on this. Just a few things for the logo, I think A is the favorite here. And I also emailed, I don't really care for the map as well, so if we can just get rid of that and put a condor in place maybe or something like that, that's cool to everyone. As far as the money and the staff time and everything, I'm not opposed to just dropping the opening ceremony completely at all either and just having the ceremony at the end be kind of more time and energy towards that. And just dropping that and then even, that's just my thoughts right now, is we could just get rid of that whole opening ceremony, save money and then staff time and then also we could, if we're worried about more staff time, we could just, you know, brush over a couple of these events, we don't need to include all of them, of course. And doing the chili cook-off at the end. As far as what you mentioned Supervisor Cosmickey with the journalism issue, I didn't think about that. I'm, I'm not a journalist, so I didn't even consider that really, but I understand that is an issue. I would like to explore a way to do that correctly though, because I think it'd be cool to, to highlight the history, you know, monthly like that. And so I don't know how to do that, I don't know if you have any ideas or if there's a way to do that correctly. But just so, just so we, as the ad hoc, have like more direction, I don't know where the board is as far as what we want, what direction we really want to go with, with this budget and the events. I just, just because I don't want to meet and then have this like, well, what do we do, what do we do? So we really want to get like more information if that's possible or a cleaner picture of where we want to go. I don't know if anyone has anything to add.
Thank you Supervisor Zanger, yes, we need more concrete suggestions and advice on what you would like to not see and see.
I can go if you guys want. So I completely agree with Chair Satello on the overall picture and I understand, we all know you're pro-community and so am I. But, but, and, you know, I think we can definitely flush this out. So if we're gonna pick between one or the other, I would actually suggest keeping the opening ceremony and maybe dropping the closing because we're starting off the year, we're kicking off the 150th and then there's maybe some things to follow that. And then I would just suggest, coming back to the staff time issue, I would suggest if we're gonna do events to really limit it to two or three, maybe, you know, I mentioned the county fair, we already have a county fair booth, we could just incorporate the 150th into the county fair booth next year. And then I would, you know, if you want to do a couple other events, you know, that's fine, but I would actually be, I think it would be appropriate to hold an opening ceremony, to perhaps do the fair, to maybe have a vehicle in the HDA Lights On Parade, something along those lines, just to have a presence of that kind. And then to maybe edit out the rest of it and to just focus on opening ceremony, a couple of primary events. And, and then if you still want to do the outreach part, you know, like I said, you know, I think you could find a writer, an independent communications person that just is a writer. I could certainly help give suggestions if desired and, but that's essentially where I'm at, thank you.
So Supervisor Cosmickey, as to your objection to Benito Link, don't you think that they could help us provide a educational article where it wouldn't be a conflict that you perceive?
Oh, yeah, no, I don't, I don't, it's nothing against Benito Link, I just, if we're paying them money, that's the issue where it becomes, like, they should be, they should be more than willing to write articles about our 150th without being paid for it. I mean, that, if I was the editor of Benito Link, it would be, hey, we're celebrating 150th, let's have a series of articles on that. That, maybe we can engage them to see if there's interest in doing something like that without actually paying them, because once you're paying an organization like that, that's expected to turn around and report on you fairly and ethically, it's just, even though it's a relatively small dollar amount, it just, for me, it just rings an alarm bell, that's all.
What if taking that, and what if we, there are some organizations that have been here for a really long time, what if we partnered like with the nonprofits and like if, you know, maybe once a month, it's like as we're highlighting the county, because what makes us special is kind of everything within the county, right? And so what if you had different groups, like, okay, one month it's gonna be cattlemen and cattlewomen that are gonna write a story and it, and so, and the combination of all of those stories gives you a really well-rounded picture of the county, you know? And I'm talking every single, I mean, it's failing me right now, all the different organizations, but there are so many and there are so many that have been here for so long. You know, I know Kinship was here for years, I know that's not what they were called anymore, but I mean, my grandma was a member of that. I think there's just, there's so many that I wonder if we could get, and then it takes the task off of the county for having to do it and it also takes it off of possibly a conflict or whatever. And, and then maybe Benito Link is willing to write one or two articles, but maybe the historical society is willing to write one. Maybe a student from the high school would be willing to write one about the high school and the evolution of, so I don't know, but I think, and then just kind of the combination of all of them maybe, and then it's just us reaching out to an organization. And then it's a way for them to highlight what they're doing too. I mean, I think last year, when I was still with... I mean, I think last year when I was still with Farm Bureau, it was our, we celebrated our 100th year here in the county. So I know that there are stories there. So I, I, I don't know if that might help. But again, kind of getting, and I believe it gets more of the community involved, right? And more a part of the process. And then maybe it's something we have, you know, maybe at the county fair, we have all of these articles that have been written kind of on display and we invite people to come out and I, I don't know.
Yep.
Madam Chair? Okay, I like all the ideas coming out of this conversation. I am supportive of it being in the unincorporated area. I like the idea that at the county fair next year, we highlight everything that we did and we brought together. I, I like where that's going. I think that would make the booth a lot more interactive with the public. When it comes to swag, I don't want to go off the rails with swag, but I do feel some, the, a pen, you know, the pen, the, the whole kind of rebranding i- is very important just to show that we've kind of evolved a little bit and that we're highlighting the egg industry. I'm going to just keep coming back to the, the egg industry is so very, very important to make sure. I do like the idea of bringing in the community groups and having them help with the, the history part. I think we could make something out of that and it could be something that we highlight on social media that could be quite positive. And it, and maybe an independent writer that works more towards coordinating this, but then Benito Link can publish some of these articles, you know? Kind of tying those two together. I am good with cutting the list way down. I am supportive of the 150th opening ceremony being the highlight and everything else just kind of, you know, adding to the 150th. I think this is a huge undertaking. It is way too much commitment for staff time. So I support Supervisor Curo and Supervisor Cosmickey on that. I am supportive though of in this opening ceremony, it having live music highlighting our diverse culture of our community. So it, it's not just, you know, I, I'm, I'm a country western kind of gal. But I mean, Latin night is very important too. I did take ballroom dancing also. So I'm supportive, but I want it to highlight all of our community. And I love that we're making it accessible to all of our residents, not just a select few. I think that is the biggest thank you because I want this to be totally inclusive and supportive of our farm workers, our egg, our, our ranchers, you know, the deep rooted history of how San Benito County. And I like the idea of, of hayrides because it's, hey, you know, it's, how did we start? Also, don't forget, it's not just that we were from Monterey County, we were also Fresno County. So utilizing information from the Recorder's Office that has all of that history of where we got our big chunk from Monterey, but then our little chunk from Fresno and why that happened. So, thank you.
Well Supervisor Zanger, you and I have our work cut out for us.
Yeah, and I would, I mean, I totally.
Scratch the plan and start over.
Well, no, I don't think you guys need to scratch. Don't scratch, don't scratch it. I think you gave us a lot to consider and then really kind of narrow it down from there, right? So like, you gave us all the options. It wasn't maybe that you were necessarily suggesting all options, but now you've kind of gotten the feedback. I agree, I think the 150th opening ceremony would be really cool. I would suggest, you know, maybe there's multiple bands. Maybe you have like a Western band. But then I would recommend, you know, us doing like a mariachi or something, I think would really be inclusive of the community. They have those beautiful folklorico dancers that I think would be really amazing. So I think there's a lot that you could do with that kind of opening ceremony. And, and, and just calling it not even an opening ceremony, but our 150th celebration party, our birthday party. Right? And, and just make it a big fun birthday party. And so I, I agree, I would be supportive of doing the Lights On Parade. I think a lot of the community comes out for that. I will caution, that is Thanksgiving weekend. So it will be a commitment from the Board of Supervisors that we will be there. I, I think, you know, we need to commit to making this a success as well. The fair, I think, is really important that we participate in that. Again, a lot of community is there and it's in the unincorporated. I would love to do a, the moonlight walk with the Anza Trail with supervisors. I think would be really cool. And I am supportive of, of getting some giveaways, swag, whatever you want to call it. And I'm not opposed to doing the coloring books. I just would want to make sure that we have enough, that we don't run out like we did at the fair. So I hope that provides the ad hoc enough.
Yeah, that's very helpful. And like you said, yeah, we just, we want to present everything and so we could go from there. And, and I did look for grants briefly on that stuff. I couldn't find any, but I'm not the, maybe I'm not the best grant finder. So I think we have someone that can do that better.
Yeah, we have California Consulting, we'll go ahead and look at them, ask them.
Madam Chair, one very quick.
Yeah, go ahead.
I agree on the time capsule. If we're going to do a time capsule incorporated into the opening ceremony as opposed to having a separate ceremony, thank you.
Madam Chair, I, I agree. I, I know you, you think we're mimicking Hollister, but time capsule is so exciting. I've been a part of several of them in communities. And to go back into a time capsule 100 years later and see what was, you know, the highlights at that time, it was, it was really fun. And I think in the future, it could be very beneficial to talk about where we came from. Hopefully we're all still, you know, around or at least our generations in the future are around.
Okay, and on that note, I'm going to task the supervisors to start thinking about what kind of items would they like to include in the time capsule? Because I know when we were presented the offer to send something to the, the city time capsule, we had to scramble at the last minute. And so I would like to make sure that it's well thought out, whatever we're putting in there and we incorporate everybody's suggestion.
I asked this question before and I don't know, you maybe have the answer now. Are there any time capsules previously from the Board of Supervisors that we could open? I think that would be really cool. The unveiling of a time capsule from 50 years ago.
So I reached out to both our clerk of the board and/or county clerk recorder, sorry, sorry Francisco, no. But, but as far as records, there wasn't anything that they could dig up. I think Francisco mentioned there may have been something at the 100th. We're still digging into it, but we're looking for it.
I've only heard one rumor about a time capsule and it could totally be a rumor. But where the 1960 something, I know it's not enough time, but in the old Hall of Records or the new Hall of Records, which is the, the, the old courthouse, under those staircase, there's a, a date that's on the side there. I was told that there was a time capsule inside there. I don't know, but we're doing some construction because of the fire, you might be able to.
Yeah, we'll get in touch with Stephen maybe.
But not, not sure if that's just a rumor.
Okay. Well, I was wondering the same thing. I actually called Dulce Amal there. It says 1960 something on the building. I think maybe right there, it always makes, and every time I've driven by, I've always thought, that's where the time capsule is. So we just need somebody to bust up the building and get it out for us.
Destruction of public property.
So.
I think we have some county employees that would like to bust up that building. Just a side note there.
Well, thank you for all your suggestions. As I said, you've given us a lot to think about and to revise and so forth. So thank you.
Okay, great. Is that enough? Okay, thank you so much.
Appreciate it. Thank you, the ad hoc.
Okay, moving on to item 2.3. Introduce and waive first reading on an ordinance of the Board of Supervisors of the County of San Benito, amending chapter 25 dot 07 dot 016 of the San Benito County Code in relation to political signs.
Good morning, Board of Supervisors, Madam Chair and members of the public. I am here today to introduce and request to waive the first reading of an ordinance to the Board of Supervisors of the County of San Benito for chapter 25 point 07 point 06 of the San Benito County Code in relation to political signs. The proposed amendment, amendment was brought forward in a discussion that was had with the Election Security Advisory Committee, AKA ESAC, which is made up of law enforcement, legislative leaders and the Office of Emergency Office. The committee was commissioned by the Register of Voters to provide subject matter expertise as we prepare for the March 5th presidential election. Now, the proposed amendment to the San Benito County Ordinance Code 25 07 016, section P, provides clarity and distinction between the temporary and political signs. For the purpose of distinctions, political signs refer to a sign that is placed not sooner than 90 days prior to a scheduled election, is removed within 10 days after the election and advocates for a particular outcome in an election. This language aligns with local regulations, I apologize. The language aligns local regulations with the California Business and Professions Code, section 54 05 point 3, which requires that each candidate at the time of filing nomination paperwork, file with Caltrans what's called a statement of responsibility in which they declare knowledge of the provisions as it relates to political signs. The amendment also clarifies that political signs are exempt from permitting requirements if they fall within the definition of what a political sign is. That is, it is placed not sooner than 90 days prior to the scheduled election, it is removed at 10 days after the election and advocates for a particular outcome in an election. However, the amendment ordinance does not exempt political signs from local enforcement. The county has the authority to remove signs that obstruct sight of distances, restrict highway use, obscure necessary traffic features, interfere with normal maintenance efforts or identify as traffic hazards. The new language however, also adds on a little bit more clarity when it comes to local enforcement authority for signs that are deemed abandoned. Abandoned signs are considered abandoned if they are placed on the property without the property's owner's consent or this section only applies to as provided to the property owner with the right to remove a political sign that's placed without the property's owner's consent by the property owner or their property owner's agent or any other person that has the right to make a decision for that property. If it remains in place on any property after the 10th day after the election or if it interferes with any right of way or Eastman or it creates a hazard deemed by the county code enforcement, Caltrans, CHP, or any other government agency responsible or related to safe movement of the public, whether pedestrian, vehicle or other. As mentioned before, the, the proposed amendment only clarifies and adds additional language to align local political signs with that of the state. It does not change or amend any of the other language within this ordinance. It only does to section P, which is now titled political signs.
Thank you, Francisco. Do we have any public comment on this item?
If you'd like to make a comment in chambers, please provide a speaker card and on Zoom, please press star nine or the raised hand icon. And I have no public comment.
Thank you. So I guess I'm going to open it up to all of you, but I just wanted to say a couple of things first. So I'm sitting on this Election Security Advisory Committee. And so it was brought forth that it was just that this change was needed. There is, there is nothing changed in the sign ordinance except this added language because the way it's currently written is that every single person that was going to put out campaign signs, you would need to get a permit. And so, you know, there was a lot of discussion about it and they kind of almost felt like it was borderline infringing on people's kind of free speech because you're, you're making them get a permit. And then they also, we already, when you're running, you have to sign agreements and do different things. This was just one more kind of cumbersome process that didn't really serve a, a kind of a need. And so hence why we brought it back. I think that there is some work that needs to be done on the sign ordinance as a whole. But the urgency with this item is that we have this election coming up. And so that's why we only took this one tiny little section and are speaking to that alone. Like we're not looking at anything else. And so it's just this added language at the last page. So I just kind of wanted to preface it so that if people are wondering, hey, where did it come from? That's kind of where it stemmed from. So I'll open it up to the board for comments and questions. Ben?
I can go first.
Supervisor Cosmickey?
Thank you. Yeah, so if I recall correctly, I think it was Supervisor Zanger and I had previously brought forward an item to, to actually sort of maybe go in the other direction a little bit as far as, you know, requiring a little more accountability for the signs that are put out into public right of ways and left out, you know, I totally agree, the ones, especially the ones that are left out, you know, after the election and then it's usually somebody that didn't win the election and then there's signs out there that they seem like maybe they're a little bitter and there's signs left out there for like six months and it's the most annoying thing. I, you know, we do definitely have to have something in place for that. You know, I don't mind clarifying language and, and we were in the minority on the, going the other way. So I'm not totally, just, that's totally reasonable. I just want to get clarity on, so people can essentially, you know, I, I'll back up a second. My biggest thing is just, everybody have an even playing field. So whatever the, the rules are, just we want to have clarity with everybody. You know, these are the rules and this is, these are the consequences. These are the potential consequences. So first and foremost, that's the most important thing that, you know, whatever we do, let's make sure that we get the word out in your office. I don't know if you deal with that with communications on signs, but Angela's shaking yes. But making sure that candidates are all aware of what the rules are so that everybody's just basically has a fair approach to it. That's, to me, that's really the, the main thing. So if a sign is out in a public, you know, right of way, because I think a lot of candidates, you know, it's just the keeping up with the Joneses. If you, if your opponent is able to do it or they're willing to do it, even if it's technically against the rules, then, you know, you feel the obligation to do it or else you feel like you're being left behind. I, I personally don't think that it's really that big of a deal because, you know, hopefully signs don't necessarily determine the elections. But so if there's a, if there's a grouping of signs, let's say along, you know, a thoroughfare like, this might be a bad example because of the construction, but like the 156, you know, in Union Road area where there's these hotspots where there are just a bunch of signs that are placed out. We wouldn't require a permit for those. What about, what's the, what's the determination on? And maybe, I think we've spoken previously, so I, I know the answer from you is you guys don't get into enforcement, but where's the line drawn as far as, okay, there's going to be, if you can provide insights and you might know, like where was, where's the line drawn on, you know, this area is going to get signs taken away versus another area that's not? Is it if somebody calls and complains, you know, and then the signs get taken down? Which of course to me also rings an alarm bell because, you know, people have supporters and if their supporters don't want your sign out there, then all they have to do is call and then so-and-so's sign gets taken down. So it's, you know, there's obviously a lot of layers to this. And so I just, I'm just curious as far as, is it just a free-for-all then? Like we can, you know, candidates can put signs out and trust that they're not going to get taken down as long as they're not impeding on traffic? I saw some of the language, impeding on site visibility, basically safety issues. Can you comment at all and just kind of your understanding of, again, so that everybody kind of has the, the same understanding at all on that?
Great question. Our intent with this language is to make it easier to digest when people are running for office or whether it be a campaign or a committee. Because now we can provide a clear section in the county ordinance that says what a political sign says and what are the requirements and how it can be enforced. So anybody or candidate is going to have a political sign, they're going to place it out in the community, they have to have permission of the property owner. It has to be either private property or commercial with, once again, consent of those individuals. Anybody that's placing signs in an area where they haven't had consent, it can be considered an abandoned sign, whether it's done by the candidate or someone, someone in their committee. Also, if they're placing signs anywhere in government property, that can be removed. If they're placing signs on the highway, then Caltrans has the ability to remove those signs. And if they're interfering with traffic, creates a safety issue, then either enforcement or any other law enforcement can also remove that sign because now it becomes a safety and health issue. Our hope with this is to make it very clear and also to try and hold accountable candidates and also committees that this is a section that applies to ordinance, signs as it pertains to the county. And I have to say the county because the cities also have the ability to put forward their own political sign ordinance as well.
And yes, that does clarify, but it's still the enforcement part, I think. And yeah, so that does clarify, but it's still, the enforcement part, I think, is still very gray, and I think that was really the goal previously when we brought forward the other item, was to just like basically say, like, you're, we are gonna have enforcement, if you put your sign out, you know, in this area and on the public right of way, then it's gonna eventually be removed, but now we still have this gray area where we don't, we don't do enforcement. And I think that's, as far as a county goes, I think that was the message we spoke about this issue last time around, is that we're not going to do enforcement. So, I guess I'm just, I just, it's just leaving a lot of question marks for me overall, because I just still don't know what candidates are supposed to do. Because if your opponent, again, puts a sign out on X, Y, and Z public area, then you're naturally going to feel compelled to at least consider doing the same, because you want to at least have your message out there on an even playing field. So, I guess, I wish we could just tell people one way or the other, yes, you know, your signs are gonna get taken down if you do this, or no, they're not, and, you know, we're still in the same, that's still the flaw, and I don't know the correct answer to it, to be honest, but there's still a flaw here in that it's still kind of a guessing game, and you still have, your opponent's advocates, again, can just simply pick up the phone and say, you know, why are we allowing so-and-so's sign at highway X, Y, and Z, where the person they're supporting might have a sign somewhere else, and they're obviously not gonna say, well, why are they allowed to have their sign there? So, that's where I see the flaw. I appreciate the effort. One question I had is, so private property, let's, just to be clear for the public, if somebody puts a sign on private property outside of the window, because I think there have been some rulings on this, I know that, I think the former DA was involved in sort of specializing and trying to, you know, go after people that are trying to restrict you from the free speech rights of private property. Can we just reemphasize the private property aspect of it? Because, you know, there are signs out there right now, you know, for instance, there are, don't dump on San Benito signs out there, just as an example. So, I would like to know for clarity, what happens to if somebody has that example of a sign out somewhere public versus private, and what might happen?
Well, great question as well. So, when it comes to the, I just want to reiterate to the enforcement mechanism, anybody who violates the current ordinance that's gonna be put in place, and it's been reported to one of the law enforcement agencies, or it's been reported to enforcement, that sign will be removed. Ultimately, it is our hope that our candidates, as they come into our office, and they're told this, that they're gonna abide by the rules, and they're gonna run a fair and political campaign, as we all hope they do. When it comes to the second question that you asked, this ordinance right now, as it's being amended, it's only to address what's considered a political sign, and that's within the ninety days, that's for an outcome of something that's gonna be on the ballot. It could be a measure, it could be a candidate, any sort of issue. Anything else that falls outside of that parameter, it's not considered a political sign. It may be political in nature, but it's not political for this upcoming election. So, the rest of the county ordinance would apply, in that those individuals will have to go through the permitting process as the current ordinance says. Any violation of that county ordinance, then there's additional enforcement mechanisms that other ordinances allow the county to move forward. So, when it comes, for example, to the question was, the landfill signs, those are not considered political signs, in that they're not currently gonna be a measure or something on the ballot, as far as we know. It might be a board supervisor action or a decision, but it's not an action that's gonna be on the ballot soon. So, that will fall under temporary political, temporary signs, and they will have to get permitting processes.
What about private property?
My understanding is the county, and I can get county council to answer that question, but they are required, even if it's private property, to go through the permitting process.
I think we have to get a firm answer on that, because I, my understanding is that is, that is not true, that you have free speech rights on your private property to put whatever you want on there as far as signage goes, and I think we definitely have to get a firm answer to that part of this.
Well, I would just say that's not part of the thing that we're considering today. I think that goes along with kind of looking at the sign ordinance as a whole, and kind of how do we address it? But I think that's not really part of the discussion for today with what we're considering, you know what I mean? Because it's outside of the political signs.
And that was just because there was this stated differential between political signs versus non-political signs, and it was brought up as far as you do need to get a permit versus you don't need to get a permit, and that's why I thought it might be relevant to those examples.
It's absolutely relevant, it's absolutely relevant, but just for the time urgency part of it is, it's not part of this discussion, you know what I mean? It's absolutely relevant, and like I said, I absolutely think we need to bring the sign ordinance back, but that's not what we're discussing today, so.
Yeah, I hear you.
Sorry.
Francisco? I appreciate your explanation, and as candidates, we're all responsible adults, and we agree to abide by the rules and the laws and the procedure of the county, and so I don't see this being a problem at all. So, I'm supportive of it, thank you for this. It just adds clarification, and as long as we as candidates, whoever we might be, we follow the rules, I think we'll be okay, you know? And it is a fair playing field, because we all have that opportunity and that right to be able to purchase signs and install them in the proper locations. It's incumbent upon us as individuals to make sure that we just adhere to the rules, and I think by us worrying any more than that, we're kind of trying to control, you know, human behavior that we don't need to, we're gonna hope that these elected, these individuals who are running for office are gonna be responsible in and of themselves. And if not, then there's a way to report it, right?
Correct.
Okay, and so what would that way be to report it, for those people who might want to complain about a sign that's placed inappropriately?
So, once the passage of this goes forward, what we are intending to do in the Elections Office, is put forward information where people in the public can report, whether it be to Caltrans, to the Elections Office, the FPPC, or also to our local enforcement, cities, and Hollister, and the county of San Benito, so those agencies can be notified, and they can take action. Now, like mentioned before, if it's on the private property while permission, it will be considered an abandoned sign, and the owner has the right to remove that.
Okay, thank you, thank you for that clarification. Supervisor Curl? Sorry, or do you want to go Supervisor Zenger?
I don't care who goes first.
I don't care, you go right ahead Supervisor Zenger.
Okay, thank you. Yeah, thank you, thank you for being forward. I, we spoke, and I understand the language clarification here. Couple things, I will say, as to the comment about how signs get taken down, I spoke with someone from Caltrans, and they, they told me that they don't, they don't bother with signs unless they get a call. So, that is how, as far as Caltrans, that is how they get taken down, someone calls about a sign from their opponent, basically, and I don't know what there is to do about that as far as Caltrans. And I'm gonna take, I'm gonna take Supervisor Curl's thing here and say, I think we mentioned GIS at some point, as far as clarifying this up for the public, using GIS to help map out the exact locations of where signs are and aren't allowed, so I just want to make sure that we're following up on that to a degree.
Yeah, that's something I'm curious about, too, the public right of way, so we make sure that we're not, you know, infringing on that.
Yeah, yeah.
That's where the GIS would come in.
Yeah, that would make it a lot more clear for people, because it is confusing, I'll say. And, yeah, I know, I understand, we're not rehashing the whole sign ordinance right now. I had my thoughts on that, but I, and I agree that there does need to be a little more work done for it, but I get that's not what we're doing today, so I'm okay with the language here, and I would, if, I don't know how relevant it is, but I think County Council looked like he was about to jump in on the private property issue, can we address that, if you have an answer, just real quick?
Well, yes, non-commercial signs on private property can be regulated, but only, it has to be content neutral, and it has to be the placement and size, and based upon the sign characteristics itself, exclusive of the content of the sign. So, commercial is, the courts look at commercial differently and apply a different standard of review, they can be regulated a little more than a non-commercial sign. So, as a private owner, I can put a sign on my property that says, I don't like that street, or there's too many potholes in this city, and as long as it falls within, there's nothing in the law that says it can't be a permitted sign. So, you can have permit regulations, you just can't permit content, only the size of the sign, like, so you can regulate the size of a sign on private property, but not the fact that a sign is there.
Understood, thank you, that's all.
Okay, well, I'm gonna keep it real short and brief, but I do want to acknowledge that Supervisor Cosmickey did bring this previously, we had a good dialogue during that meeting, and came up with a compromise that I thought we were going to be able to get over the finish line, and we lost. But, this is getting really close to where we were trying to get to, which is, we have a major problem with political signs and enforcement, and there is no actual real answer that fits well. I did a lot of research this, on this as a candidate, and the problem with the GIS, which I would love to eventually have a GIS map of where you can and cannot have political signs, the problem is Caltrans is not specific on easements. They vary, and they don't map them. They actually do it on a case-by-case location. So, in order to actually do this, it's gonna take a lot more research. So, with that said, I like where you're going, it's not possible at this time, but we can always advocate with Caltrans and COG to make that a priority, because I think this is a problem not just in San Benito County, this is a problem across the country, I mean, signage, you're gonna get candidates that don't follow the rules. And I will admit, I am one of those candidates that was, I have to take advantage of every possible location that is safe in order to put my name out there, because nobody knows who I am. So, I get how it's an important thing for candidates that are running, but at the same time, enforcement is the most important, consistency. If you're taking one down because it's, it's not safe, and there's one right next to it, and they deem that it is safe, I think we need to have enforcement realize, you can't just cherry pick, cherry pick which signs you're taking, you're taking both signs down. When it comes to Caltrans and enforcement, yeah, it is based on a complaint, but once they get one complaint, they pull them all. And I had to go dumpster diving at Caltrans, I will admit, for all my signs. I'm not gonna say I'm a saint, because I'm not. But, the other thing is, this scratches the surface, and it actually separates out some of the things that I've had concerns with, which are signs that are campaign in nature, but are not campaign signs for a specific election. So, this addresses that, and I think that's the first step in regulating and making sure that signs around our community are permitted, if they're out there twenty, all the time, we need permits on those signs, and we need to look at future regulations on those signs and size, but I do not want to infringe on freedom of speech either, so I want to walk that line very carefully. I am in support of this, I think it's a first step, and we'll see how it goes. Unfortunately, you're not really gonna know how candidates react to this until you go through an election. And so, my only comments to enforcement, which I want to make sure are still the same, when someone complains about a sign in the city, it's going to Public Works, and if they're complaining about a sign in the county, it's City Public Works, and it's in the unincorporated area, it's County Public Works. San Juan Batista, it's county, because it's San Juan.
Correct, so San Juan Batista, as far as I know right now, does not have an ordinance in place around political signs. However, I can tell you, they are having discussions as well, to try and address some of the same issues that we're currently going through as well.
Yeah, so, the other thing is, and I'm assuming because of your group, and I don't know, that that Caltrans form is going to be information that's shared more regularly? See, the problem I have is that that Caltrans form goes to Caltrans, and you don't get a copy of it, because it goes direct to Caltrans. How can we change that so that you're aware of who to contact? Making sure that the county enforcement agencies have contacts, so candidates can remove their signs and not have to go dumpster diving, like some of us have to. I just think it would be better for all candidates to have a point of contact, that's my only comment, but I am supportive of this first step, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, so what is the will of the board? Do we need to make a motion to waive the first reading?
Yes, I'll move to approve the introduction and waiver the first reading of the ordinance on the Board of Supervisors for the County of San Benito, Chapter 25.7.016, regarding the county code related to political signs, as indicated by staff recommendation.
I'll second with a comment, because after we second, we can comment, right?
Yeah.
We can continue conversation. The effective date, I'm sorry, I wasn't sure, how does this align with the election?
So, the effective date, we will have to have one more reading, that's what I'm starting, and thereafter it will be effective, and it will be right before the ninety days
That's what I wanted to hear.
Of the signs, that's, that's part of the urgency.
Gotcha.
So that we can then provide it to all the qualified candidates and any other committees that are gonna be putting up political signs.
Before they put up their signs.
For the political signs.
I just want to make sure that that's being done, thank you.
Yeah, isn't it thirty days after the final reading? Usually, right?
Oh, pause.
For the election.
Before the election.
Okay, so we have a first and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Five zero, thank you, Francisco. At this time, we're gonna go ahead and break for closed session, so we'll come back and do Item 2.4 and 2.5, and then the consent. County Council, do you, a public comment for closed session?
If you'd like to make a comment in chambers, please provide a speaker card, and on Zoom, please press star nine or the raised hand icon. And I have no public comment.
Thank you. County Council, do you need to report anything for closed session? No? Okay, all right, so we're gonna go ahead and break for closed session. About forty-five minutes, so we should be back, let's say, at twelve fifty-five.
Give us a five-minute cushion.
Which is ten to fifteen.
Okay, calling the meeting back to order. County Council, do we have anything to report out of closed session?
Yes, there was one item dealing with labor negotiations, all units. Information was provided and staff was provided with direction.
Thank you. Okay, now moving back to regular agenda. Item 2.4, take actions necessary to implement the Uniform Public Construction Cost Accounting Act in San Benito County. Adopt an ordinance entitled an ordinance of the San Benito, of the Board of Supervisors of the County of San Benito, amending chapter 15.09 of the county code of the County of San Benito to provide informal bidding procedures under the Uniform Public Construction Cost Accounting Act, and amending chapter 5.09 and two, adopt a resolution electing to become subject to the act effective November 10, 2023.
Thank you. There was a full presentation at the last meeting, so this is coming back to the board for final action, so I'll just go over it very briefly. After there were some concerns raised at the next meeting, I wanted to assure the board that we're going to address those and discuss those more during the purchasing policy. And how we're going to potentially propose that to the board is to indicate that there has to be a minimum number of quotes before, or at least attempted to get quotes, based upon the dollar amount of the contract, and also to have potential bidding opportunities posted on the county's website. We did do additional research to determine whether there was qualitative, quantitative data that indicates that the use, the KUPCA results in lower bidding costs, but as the counties that, in the cities that responded, subjectively indicate that they believe that this results in a more effective, lower-cost bidding procedures, just because of a variety of items, including the reduction in staff time, the fact that the formal bidding procedure results in sometimes great delays in having the bidding out there before somebody responds, or sometimes no bidders responding to it because of the lack of like small companies to do, respond to formal bids. And in addition, the ability to have more discretion in the selection process, instead of just going straight with the low bidder, potentially has the, potential has the, for reduction of change orders and to select higher-quality contractors that has an established track record. So, we're asking for the board to adopt the ordinance and adopt the resolution, and we'll bring forth the details in the purchasing policy when that comes to the board.
Thank you, Barbara. Do we have any public comment?
If you'd like to make a comment in chambers, please provide a speaker card and on Zoom, please press door nine or the raised hand icon. I have no public comment.
Thank you. Any comments or questions from the board? No? Okay, seeing none. What is the will of the board? Somebody want to make a motion?
I'll move to approve the, adopt the ordinance entitled an ordinance of the San Benito Board of Supervisors, amending chapter 15.09 of the county code, and also to adopt the resolution per staff recommendation.
I'll second.
Okay, so all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed?
No.
So, four to one Supervisor Cosmicke opposed. Thank you. Okay, now we will go on to item 2.5, Discuss San Benito County Board of Supervisors Governance Handbook and Assessment Board Rules, Procedures, and Policies and Board Requested Future Agenda Items. Dulce, I believe you're doing this one, right?
Yeah, thank you, Madam Chair, Dulce. Alonzo will be presenting this item.
So, good afternoon, board. So, before you is the Supervisor's handbook and as well as assessment rules and procedures. These were presented back in January of this year when Babs drafted them. They haven't changed since, but they're on here for, for the board to consider providing staff direction on what, what the will of the board is with that. So, we, at that time, we had paid a consultant to do a few workshops, and she developed them. And as of right now, they have not been adopted, so, so those are there for you for consideration. And also, future agenda items, two board meetings ago, the board had discussed looking at the items they've put on, on the future agenda items, and really looking if those are priorities still, if they wanted to remove anything from there. So, my understanding is maybe the board as a whole could provide direction on future agenda items, and then the, I don't know if there's any, we, if there's anything the committee wanted to add that, to that, but, but from our end, that's all we have.
Madam Chair, do you want to go ahead and go first on that?
Sure. So, so we, so Supervisor Gonzalez and I are on the ad hoc regarding kind of the rules and procedures, and I think the governance policy. And so, we had kind of a conversation. I'm not really in favor of this governance policy or the rules and procedures. I've actually seen some examples of some other counties that I thought were pretty, pretty good and comprehensive, and really gave clear information to the board, clear information for staff to follow, and even the public. So, I guess I would really like to see the board give County Council permission to review the governance manual and the policy and procedures model that I have found. I believe it's from Nevada County. Will that be, I believe it's Nevada County. No, I think it's, I think it's Nevada, but I could be wrong, but.
The sample that we saw?
It's Eldorado, okay, sorry, Eldorado County. And so, I would like County Council to review that and see if it's a better fit for us. I realize the previous board put in a lot of time and effort in this governance policy, but there were three of us that weren't there during that time, and we are here now. And so, I think, I think we can get something that works even better for not only the board, but for the community and staff to follow. So, that is, I'm, I'm not looking for the, any of that to be approved today, just I wanted to throw that out there if you all were okay, so that we can have kind of a very transparent process, and we're all kind of part of it. And then, as far as future agenda items, we wanted to discuss the importance of getting all of the future agenda items completed as soon as possible, and in order for staff to be able to do that, we need really to put a pause on adding new agenda items to the board, and so, asking the board if, if we could put a pause. Unless there's something urgent, right, something emergency, of course, those items would still go on, but that we would make an effort to hold all of our future agenda items until after the first of the year, so that we could get through all of the future agenda items and be completely caught up, and make sure that there are no future agenda items that are outstanding. And then, the last part of it was kind of the strategic plan is listed on the future agenda items, and I think there was a little bit of a discussion of, maybe it's not a strategic plan, kind of a modified, but really setting some goals. I feel like we have an opportunity. We all, no matter what the election is, moving forward, we have one year to be together here on this dais. And so, it, I think having some sort of a strategic plan, goal-setting meeting to, you know, closer to the end of this year, to really identify picking, you know, five priority areas that we really, really can focus on. We did that in February at our board retreat, but I think we had like 25, and so, really hard for staff to be able to focus and, and, and get all of the things we want to get done. And so, if maybe we could work together. So, those were just kind of some of the, that was a little bit of, giving a little bit of a history of kind of where we were and, and how this item came to be. Do you want to add anything to that Supervisor Gonzalez?
Yes, I was actually disappointed that I didn't see the Eldorado example in, in the attachments. Right, I know, I know it wasn't. I said I was disappointed to not see it, and I was surprised to see the, the board rules and procedures that, that had been. that, that had been delayed this, this entire calendar year because of the, the state that it's in currently. I know a lot of time has been put into this, but I really believe the Eldorado example was, you know, fitting the need of our county much better than, than this document that we currently have as an attachment to the agenda. And then, going back to the future agenda items, yes, I totally concur with that. It seems like our list of future agendas items is what, about 100 items long almost? Let me, before I. Okay, but I want to make sure that we give time to staff to adequately address the issues that we've already raised previously as supervisors. And so, if we could look at that six-month moratorium before we add any more items on the agenda, and let staff take care of and whittle down what's already currently on the table, so that we can go ahead and take care of those and then move on. I think that's, that's advantageous for staff as well as, as a county and supervisors to work on getting things done.
Are you done Supervisor Gonzalez?
Yes, sorry.
Any comment?
Madam Chair?
Yeah, Supervisor Zenger?
I got it. Thank you. Yeah, so about the, so regarding the future agenda item portion of this. So, I'm not really concerned personally with the number of items on the list. I'm concerned with the order at which they're done. And so, I, I understand the intention here, but I also don't really understand if I just like save up 10 items over the next six months, and then on January 2nd, we just throw them all out and make another list of 60 items. I don't really see how that's, how that's to anyone's advantage. I guess it just, it looks nice when the list gets checked off and done, but if I'm just going to come out with all the items anyway, I don't understand why, why I'd be holding them in as we go. I mean, I, I see, I don't see a problem with, as they come up, you can bring them to the agenda, and they just don't get, you know, addressed until prior items get addressed. That's sort of where I was, was thinking about it. I, I don't know. I mean, I don't know, I don't really, I just don't really understand, I guess, why it would help to, to clear the list, to just make a new list in six months. So, that's, that's my thought on the future agenda items. As for the board rules, yeah, it would have been, it would have been great to, to be able to see what we're talking about with the Eldorado rules, because I don't really know how that differs from what we have here. Obviously, I haven't, I don't, I don't know their rules and procedures. That's, that's, those are my thoughts right now.
Supervisor Cosmicke, you want to go next?
Sure, yeah, I'll go. Thank you. Yeah, as far as future agenda items, I'll just reiterate. I do think they need to be more of a priority going forward, as far as having more of a structured approach to them. You know, these are clearly priorities of the board, so I want to make sure that our priorities are, you know, being treated as top priorities. And so, I would again suggest having perhaps, you know, at least after, because it looks like we're, we have a goal of doing multiple future items for the next, you know, four meetings or whatever it is for the rest of the year. And then, after that, going forward, I would suggest, as long as we have a substantial list, to really try to knock out, you know, maybe it's one a meeting. Just, I don't think that's unreasonable. And I, and I also will just throw it again, some of these, we don't need a ton of staff time put into them. It can be a pretty simple, generic summary with, you know, give direction, go at it, have your discussion, tell us whether you're even interested in staff taking more time, because I think part of it, part of the problem is that staff, and I think staff, this is where staff might get frustrated, and I know even earlier in Supervisor Gonzalez and I's term, you know, it was, they were spending a ton of time on things that just really didn't have that much of a chance of getting approved anyway. So, you know, I think we were just doing it in the wrong order, whereas now we can just take a generic topic, get some consensus on whether we want staff to spend time on that, and then they would invest the time as, and that as a priority. So, again, I would just suggest one a meeting starting January 1st. I don't have strong feelings on, you know, I do understand where Supervisor Zenger's coming from. I also understand where the chair's coming from, because we're trying to manage this list, and it's becoming, I, I think, perception-wise, it's becoming a little bit unmanageable. So, I appreciate the, the consideration, but I also want to be sensitive to, you know, Supervisor Zenger, or Supervisor Gonzalez, or Curro, or Sotelo. You may have something that constituents want you to address. Something came up today, for instance, you know, where you want to at least be able to tell them it's on the table. It's, we'll get to it. It's, it's not, they're going to be the first item, just so you understand, there's a list. I, you know, as long as we're on the same page as far as knocking these out, I could see us still going forward and allowing requests with all of us trying to have an understanding that, you know, don't just throw, you know, don't just throw paint, what is the phrase, throw against the wall? Don't throw whatever against, yeah, don't throw paint, I'll just use paint. Don't just throw paint against the wall here, just to, for whatever reasons. Make sure that it's relevant, timely, and all that, and then if we can all just have that understanding, I can sympathize with Supervisor Zenger on that. I do still believe, you know, the older items, and I know we've talked about this, and I know you've said, the chair has said we're going to bring those older items. I'm hopeful that we can have the older items kind of knocked out, even if it's just a 15-minute conversation, and get through it and say yes or no, we want to spend more time on it. And then, I also would like to see the Eldorado example probably before I want to have somebody spending time on it. And that, it's not that I'm against those rules, I just have no clue whatsoever what that might say.
We can get that and circulate to the full board.
But I'd rather have that before we give, for me, before I give direction on it. You know, maybe we can just do that next meeting then, and then we have time to look at those rules and say, yeah. Because I, I just don't want to be thrown off. I trust that you've read them, but maybe there's something in there that I'm like, whoa, that's, I don't agree with that necessarily. I, I doubt that's the case. I'm sure they're great. I'm sure they're just standard rules, but that's kind of where I'm coming from on that part, basically.
I don't want you guys to vote on it or anything like that today. I just want that you're open to the consideration of looking at other models, is all I'm looking for. That the board as a whole is okay looking beyond kind of what we did. So, I'm, that's all I'm looking for today, is kind of that support. And I will just, you know, kind of clarify a couple of things, and then, sorry Supervisor Curro, I will give you the floor. But, so I think kind of like what the ad hoc is looking for today is this, you know, moratorium, if we can, so that we allow staff to catch up. We want to, you know, at how we handle future agenda items, and maybe this is part of the consideration, is some of the things we talked about last month, where we approve a form that, which I think we saw that, I think we all got a copy of that form last time, did we? No, it was just me that was handed that form. Somebody handed me a form. I don't know. There was a form about how future agenda items were handled from another county. And so, it, the requesting member provides information on the subject matter. So, you kind of like write a little bit about what your, the effective department and a strategic plan can fit for handling that item. And then, the item would be placed on the next agenda for discussion, and then by the, you know, discussion by the full board. And then, if approved, the appropriate staff would then be directed to bring it back in a time, certain time, is how we would kind of handle future agenda items possibly, looking at that.
And again, I don't mean to take from Supervisor Curro, but it just struck me while you were saying that, that Monterey County, I'd spoken, I think it was with Mary Adams, and she basically expressed their process, and it was almost precisely the process that we were. So, I know there was some consternation about, you know, I know the County Council said I hadn't experienced this process before, but our neighbor in County Monterey essentially uses the same exact process that we've been using. So, I don't necessarily think our process is that abnormal, but I'm certainly open to cleaning it up and finding a more structured, organized way of doing it. I don't have a problem with that. I just don't think it's wacky per se, what we've been.
I don't think it's wacky. I just think it's that, we're, obviously, we're struggling to get the agenda items completed. And so, it's just a way to, it almost adds like another layer of kind of vetting through it and making sure we're, as supervisors, we're being very clear about. I mean, I've thrown stuff out there that it's like, oh, that wasn't very clear to staff, what I was really asking for, or whatever. And so, just trying to make sure that staff is very clear, so they don't spend any time spinning their wheels. So, Supervisor Curro, sorry.
No apologies necessary. Okay. The county that I would like shared on the, they actually have it, it's, it's called the Governance Manual and Rules of Procedures. It's from Plaster County, and I'd like this one shared also in advance to all board members so that they can see it too, because it really does encapsulate a new supervisor orientation, which the, no offense, Ray, to your binder, but I think we can, we can improve upon it. There's, this, this could really be helpful. But it also brings all of those rules together in one document, instead of having this document, this document, this document. I really like the Plaster County format, and I forwarded that to County Council to be able to distribute, so you don't have to go hunting for it. Is that the one you're talking, that's the one, yeah?
I'm referring to Plaster County.
Plaster County, okay. And the only reason is because we were, we were sent this, we haven't discussed it, other than the fact we got an email with this procedure, or this governance manual, which I thought, wow, this is really great. Written direction, I'm all about the board being more specific, and when we make a motion to add a new agenda item, that we, we have it very clear what our expectations are. I do kind of like the idea of, of vetting it a little, so that it comes before the board, and then the board says, are we really going to have the staff spend the time on this? Or are we going to, you know, kind of move past this? I think the strategic plan focus for the board would be really beneficial for me, and I hope the board and staff to prioritize agenda items and, and come back with how, how do we prioritize, you know, based on the strategic plan? Is it meeting all of the strategic plan goals and checking all the boxes that the board is trying to fulfill? And that should take a higher priority, in my opinion, than something that might not necessarily be for the betterment of the entire county. I don't agree with, sorry Supervisor Zenger, I don't agree with holding items until we get through the list, because if it's an easy item that can just get done, let's just get it done and get it. But I do agree it's, it, the process could use a little defining, just, just so that we're being clear to staff and having clear direction to staff. Those are my only comments. I don't think I had anything else.
Supervisor Curro, are you saying you do like the moratorium? Is that what you're saying, or you don't?
Well, the moratorium, I, I'm, I'm not going to say that we have to have a moratorium, but if it isn't urgent, I don't think we should be discussing it until we get through the, the current list, so that we can kind of hold back from announcing. I'm going to just start making a list of stuff that I want to bring to the board until we get through this list. I do agree with Supervisor Cosmicke, we need to stop just having things on the list that never come back to the board. And if it's that the staff needs more direction, then I think bring it back to the board and get the direction. Don't try and, you know, try and figure it out on your own. If there's not enough direction, bring the item back and let's just talk about it, and give the staff very clear direction, so that the item can be accomplished, whatever that topic may be. Those are my only.
Question, Madam Chair, just for clarity, I like the form idea, I think. I just want to understand it a little better. So, we would, like, I would get the form, fill it out, give it to staff, and then at the next board meeting or so, it would come back and we would discuss whether or not we're going to invest time in that. Is that correct?
Yes.
Okay. I'm fine with that. I, I think that's, that's great. I have no prob, I think it's good to, like I said, I was supportive last time about giving more direction to staff. I know I, I haven't done a good job of that in the past. I've thrown things out and it's not clear, so, so I get that. And I, and I totally understand the idea of trying to get through what we have. And just as an example, I was saying like if I had something, I, this is not a real thing, but like something about graffiti, I wanted to do something about graffiti, and I brought that up. I don't expect that to get dealt with before, like Pinnacle stuff that we've had on there, or the, the road issue that you had in your district over there. I don't expect that to get, get dealt with before. It's not what I would like. I don't, I don't want that. I want it to just kind of be more order-oriented. But I still, I still do, I don't like the moratorium idea personally, just because I'm, so I just have to have like a note of, of everything I've thought about for six months and then bring it up? I just don't get it. It doesn't make sense to me. But that's, that's just me, I guess. I don't know. We'll see.
No, I really appreciate those comments, and maybe it's something that, you know, maybe we don't have to put a moratorium on it, but if everybody, if there's like this mutual understanding that we're all going to do our best to not bring future agenda items forward for a while, so that staff can get caught up. And I think that the problem is, I think there's some items that come up that you bring up, let's say graffiti, and it's like staff can tackle it in, you know, a week. Well, guess what? It's, that's still coming before some of these older items. And so, it's a distraction from getting this work done over here on these other items. So, I, I mean, you know, it's kind of, it's tough. It's not an easy, this is probably going to be a work in progress that we're going to continually have to work towards, but it sounds like everybody's somewhat favorable to having this form, and that might help vet some of this as well. Am I kind of getting, am I hearing that correctly?
Yes.
Well, and it may be helpful, especially if staff is struggling, that if it's an item that one of us has brought forward, and you don't have enough clarity, give it back with the form to the supervisor to get the clarity, so that it's documented. And then, I, I feel like the second, whoever's seconding it needs to have that same information, so that they're on the same page when they're seconding, instead of just hearing a topic. I, I like the idea of having more clarity on, on what it is. But I am going to bring it back to strategic plan and a focus. I really think narrowing down that list that got really extensive at our last meeting, that our last.
Retreat?
Retreat, yeah, at our board retreat. I think honing in on that will help staff understand where we're trying to go as a board. And I, I just think that that's really where we need to focus. And I am totally supportive of having another meeting, separate from others, that could possibly, you know, dwindle that list down and, and get us more focused.
And I will take some blame there. I'm, I haven't been very, I'm kind of all over the place with, with my, with what I want done. So, I will try to stay more, you know, stick with the plan, I guess.
I'll agree. I, I've kind of been all over too, and I'm sorry, that's, that's the immaturity of being a new supervisor that I'm learning as I go. So, getting my priorities more in line, so that I'm very clear about what my mission is for District Four, but then how it can help the, the county. I, I think that, that'll help also the public understand where I'm going, so.
Madam Chair?
No, I'm, I'm good.
I was just going to echo the, you know, just, I know we're not crazy about special meetings, but we might want to just have a special meeting and just try to ram through some of these. Just, again, just even if they're short, we, it could be five minutes on a lot of these. I think we could just yes or no. We want to keep these on the list, because a lot of this can just get probably taken out. Doing something like that, and it would allow us to really just focus on, on these issues, you know, one of these weeks, maybe Christmas Eve, or.
Yeah. In the notes section, if I may, Madam Chair, in the notes section, there are quite a few items in here that actually have dates in it. The, this next meeting in October, November, and so hopefully, we can tackle a good amount of the 30 on this list. So, we've been working with staff to try to get these done, but I hear, I appreciate everyone's input on this. It does. There's a lot on staff's plate right now. It's just a lot, and so, we're doing our best. And, you know, it's, I appreciate the documentation too. I think it'd be great for us to look at, to evaluate, to maybe, you know, critique it, maybe add a few things that might work for us a little better, but I think that's great. I think that's important. I, I know it's going to be more work, because I know we're going to talk about it again, and we're going to go over it. But I think the clarity piece, and I think that's been kind of the missing link to some of these other old ones. Like, we have meetings where, okay, what were they trying to, what was the point? And we go back to the video recording, and then we call, and it's, you know, then what was it? So, you know, it was a while back, and so, yeah. So, I think that'd be great to have that.
Well, I would reply to that, that feel free to have staff call us. You know, I don't feel like I'm being questioned. Gracie did that with me with one item. I go, oh, no, I don't need that. I says, no, no, no. So, we're able to knock something off the list, because what I was saying from the dais was not really what I was asking for. So, feel free, staff, to reach out to us, you know, for clarification. I think it's in the best interest of us all working together, so.
Okay, so is it fair? Oh, I'm sorry, Dulce, go ahead.
I just wanted to add to what Ray was saying. We, we discussed doing quick department head announcements too, to provide updates on statuses of certain items on future agenda items. So, so it's something we could start implementing very soon.
To get some of those easy items, just to report back or whatever, so.
I like that idea of, of department head announcements, especially to keep us in the loop of where we're at. So, you don't have to do a whole agenda item. You just give us a quick announcement about where, kind of like an ad hoc announcement or a committee announcement. I think that is a fantastic idea.
Yeah, I like that as well. So, am I kind of hearing there's consensus, we're going to take the idea of a moratorium officially off, but we're all going to do our best to not add future agenda items for a while? not add future agenda items for a while. But we are going to look at adopting a, kind of the form that we, a one-page form that we would fill out. It would then be heard at the next Board of Supervisors meeting for discussion by the whole board to decide, a quick discussion to see if we want to invest any more time towards it. And then is there support for doing a special goal-setting meeting, that's what I'm going to call it, a goal-setting meeting for us as a board to figure out what are, you know, narrowing down our goals prior to the first of the year?
I totally agree, but I'd like to just add one thing, is that once we have our goals, that it's included in the form so that we're reminded of what we've agreed to as our goals and that they're our primary focus. Is there any Brown Act violation if it's a new agenda item that a supervisor is completing this form and then other supervisors see it before the meeting? We're not discussing it, but we get to see what the idea is. Is that, is there anything in there that could be a Brown Act issue?
Well, it, it could be. And it depends on, you know, if, if everybody saw the form and they go, hey, that's a great idea. Yeah, you've just violated the Brown Act because it wasn't agendized. So I, I think the idea here is to allow any board member to simply put their idea, you know, so that it's an intentional act. You know, put their idea on paper, give it to staff. That's, that staff person's going to come back then at, at the next meeting and address the board on that issue. And then the board as a whole says, you know, go forward, come back in two months, you know, with an answer.
Could we almost do it, kind of almost where we have it right now as board announcement, future agenda? And there could be like two or three, possibly however many, one, whatever. And we could, you know, kind of, I don't know, handle it right there. So this is this designated chunk of the agenda that is always handling future agenda items for consideration for future discussion or something like that.
We could do that. Other, different counties do a lot of different things. There, there is an actual formal agenda item for corrections and amendments to like agendas. So there can be, maybe spelling was incorrect or whatever. That can be something that we could, we could announce out. So I know the clerks go to their meetings and there's certain things that we could probably glean from some of those and, and maybe add that in there as, as well as what you're saying, a specific section that's related to this and be a little more formal about it. And I'm okay with that. I'd be fine with that. Because then, you know, your whole board at that point, it doesn't become a Brown Act issue because you're all, we're here, you could talk about it and give us direction. Yeah.
Supervisor Cosmiki, did you have something?
No, I was just going, if we do this, so we have the list of 25. I, we don't have to, I don't think there needs to be a ton of preparation. If we have a special meeting, get the list of 25. If people want to talk about more, but just, it's basically just narrowing down that list that we have from last year, I would think. For the most part, there might have been a couple, the hospital, for instance, came up in the last year, but probably a couple issues. But we already have a base for what we want to talk about. The other thing is, do we want to also include the future items, any of the future items or a chunk of them in that meeting?
I think if there's some left over at that time, if we're kind of planning on doing this, say, December timeframe, whatever's left still in December that we haven't accomplished by then, I think should, could possibly be.
Might be able to just knock some of them out quickly then as well.
Possibly.
Yeah, I count about, I think, seven-ish, seven or eight for, with the next meeting. And I know that we were trying to tackle some more. So, I mean, we have, I think we have 30 items on this, 30 items. It states here on the top of the page. So, you know, it's probably a third potentially, you know, that we can address in this next meeting or potentially the next meeting, the next two meetings. So I think we can make some big headway. And if we need to have a special meeting after, that'd be fine. Yeah.
I liked, I just want to say I liked the binder. I did like the binder. I know, there's a binder comment. I, I appreciate.
Thank you very much Supervisor Zenger. Thank you. It's a lot of hard work.
Don't get me going on the binder.
I gave you a thumb drive too.
Yeah, you did. You did. Thank you. Thanks Supervisor Zenger.
Chair, we still need to do public comment.
Okay. Do we have any public comment on this item? Thank you. I'm so sorry about that.
If you'd like to make a comment in chambers, please provide a speaker card. And on Zoom, please press star nine or the raised hand icon. I have no public comment.
Thank you. Okay. So I think there's consensus. I don't think we need a motion for this, do we? We're just?
No, it's, it just says staff direction. Provide staff direction. We're good. We got it.
Okay, fantastic. All right. So let's go back to consent agenda. All right. Item 1.3 from consent was pulled by Supervisor Cosmiki.
Yeah, Madam Chair, I don't have much here. I just want to clarify with the county council, because one of my issues in the past, everyone knows probably, is that trying to winnow down, you know, as much as possible, the amount of outside litigation expense. So I'm just, I'm curious as to how the dyna, how you're envisioning the dynamic as far as will the remaining in-house county council, are they strictly, are they strictly assigned to like policy sort of everyday matters? Are they going to be staying out of litigation altogether? So anytime we go to litigation, it would either go to your office or if it's a specialty, I assume we would have to, some sort of specialty, you'd have to go elsewhere?
Yeah, no, Ecam in our office and others will participate in litigation that the county has. Of course, we, when, when those people work on a case, we don't bill their time to the county. They, they're being, they're your employees.
Right.
So the, the other litigation that comes to our outside office is, is separately billed, like your outside counsel bills you.
Correct.
I can tell you, our rates are significantly less, almost $100 an hour, if not more. And so, but we're, we're kind of counseled. So you're keeping it in-house, basically, and not using all the outside firms that are currently doing litigation for the county. And that's going to wind up, so there's going to be cases that have to go out that if there's a specific, bankruptcy, for instance, we don't do that. Most other things we do, but most of it can stay with us.
Right.
And then we use in-house personnel as much as we can. And it's a good training too for them. We had a conversation with Ecam about this. He's very excited to work with us and learn litigation. And so, but again, that saves the county money because we're, you're not, we're not billing separately for time that he spends. So most court appearances he can make because he's right across the street. So you're not paying for somebody to drive here and make a court appearance.
But basically, it's your judgment call when a case comes along, the workload that's, you know, let's Ecam and whomever else, you know, has all this on their plate. So therefore we'll go to.
Only if the board assigns it to us.
Okay, okay, okay. So it's still.
You're the, you're the assigning party.
Okay.
We don't assign cases to ourselves.
All right. Sounds good. Appreciate it. Thank you.
There is one on that, on the contract, there's a header that was left on there by mistake. It's just that, you won't even see it. It's, because the contract was taken from another case we're doing. So it says the name of the case. We're just going to cross it off. It doesn't, it's not in the body of the contract at all. Just wanted to point that out. Thank you.
Are there any other questions or comments from the board? Okay. Do you want to make a?
Move to approve as recommended?
A second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Anyone to post? Five zero. Thank you. Okay, moving on now to item 1.8. This is pulled by Supervisor Zenger.
Yeah, thank you. I just pulled it just because I think anything with Hazel Hawkins right now, I just wanted to pull it because I know I'm probably going to get, someone's going to ask me about it at some point. So I was hoping to just get some clarity on what this is. I don't know who.
Yeah, Tracy's on the line. So she's, she's able to, do you want her to discuss the item for you or do you want to have her ask any questions?
No, no, just.
Okay. Yeah, Tracy, can you please over, provide a review to the board? Thank you, Tracy.
Sure, absolutely. Good afternoon. So this is a memorandum of understanding that we've had with the hospital for many years. And basically, they pay for the full-time salary, between part-time and full-time salary of an eligibility specialist to sit on-site at the hospital to triage the patients as they come in who are uninsured, to process them for Medi-Cal, to see if they're Medi-Cal eligible, so that it expedites their, their patients into the Medi-Cal system if they're eligible, and it helps with processing their claims as well. So we've had this agreement with them for years. They pay for the salary. It has been reduced to a part-time position because the state has initiated a thing called presumptive eligibility for Medi-Cal patients. So they don't see it as often.
She just passed Gavin College on 101. Yeah, we lost you, Tracy.
Oh, I'm sorry. I am traveling. I'm sorry. Did you hear? What didn't you hear? Sorry. I'm in the car.
She's going to a work event, by the way. So she's going to a.
Yeah, sorry.
Right. Okay.
Tracy, yeah, I have a question.
Yes, yes, understood. Thank you. That's, I understand. Thank you. Thank you for the explanation. I don't have anything else if everyone.
So Tracy, my question was, do we still have this position still at the Health Foundation? At the San Bernardo Health Foundation? I know at one point, we had an employee there who was processing the Medi-Cal applications. Do we still have the same arrangement?
We have, we don't have the same arrangement. We did have an eligibility specialist that was there in kind because they are a federally recognized clinic. We just have to provide applications there. The difference between the relationship with the Health Foundation and the hospital was the hospital pays for our position. Since the pandemic, we have not been on-site at the Health Foundation. And we haven't heard, actually, they haven't requested us to be back there. So we can reach out to them and see where they're at with that as well.
Thank you. Okay.
Great. Okay. So what is, somebody want to make?
Motion to approve as staff recommends.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Anyone to post? Five zero. Okay, moving on now to item 113. This is Supervisor Zenger as well.
Yes, thank you. Thanks, Steve. So I just, I was just, I guess, wondering how we keep ending up on the same consultant for so many different things. And you can go into that a little bit, just because I know they're involved in some, some bigger projects and everything else.
Yeah, great question. Thank you. So this particular project was put out to public RFP, RFQ process. So any consulting firm pretty much in California could propose on the project. And we received three excellent proposals. And there was a panel of three of us, all engineers, that ranked the proposals independently. And I think they, all the proposals came in within like two or three points of each other. And Kimley-Horn independently was ranked highest. And so it was a completely, you know, independent process from some or other projects essentially.
Okay. And how, how many projects are they working on for us right now?
Goodness. Okay. So to give you a little bit of background on that, we went out for a RFQ to select a list of on-call consultants for the county. And we came up with a list of five folks. Three of the folks are kind of larger firms, so they can do some of our larger projects. And I think Kimley-Horn, I want to say one, two, three, six or seven-ish projects right now. So, we do have a lot of projects going on. I mean, we have, if you don't count, you know, just, just the bridge and road projects, we have about 40-ish in various states. So, I mean, then clouds, little ones like speed survey studies and whatnot, and then, you know, kind of three, 30-ish larger projects in various stages of planning or design.
Okay, thanks. I don't think I have anything else.
Madam Chair, may I add? I think I've asked in the past, I'm wondering if we can get, I know some areas, they provide the bids. I just think for transparency sake, when we go out to bid, that we should, to whatever legal extent we can, provide the information on the bids that came in, if that's possible. Can you explain, and maybe I'm getting areas mixed up here, as far as areas of the country and what's legal. I've, I've lived elsewhere. Can you explain, can we do that? Can we just, can we provide the bids publicly so that, I mean, because you said, I have to, I trust you, but I, but I also, the public, I think, should have more of an ability to understand what was actually the lowest bid and then get an explanation of, well, Kimley-Horn just by far ranked higher on their engineering expertise as opposed to the, the dollar amount.
Yeah. So a tiny bit of clarification before I answer the question. On construction projects, when we go out to bid, those are awarded based on the lowest qualified bidder, purely on if they're qualified, then it goes straight to cost, where a design consultant, it's actually ranked on the proposal provided. It's not a cost. We actually do the contract afterwards unless they provide some crazy numbers. So for design contract, we rank their proposals based on what they submitted for the project. For example, each, each one of these three firms, their proposal was, I don't know, almost an inch thick of like how they were going to, what their, their strategy was for designing the project. And so we had criteria. And then, so the independent, the three of us ranked independently those three folks. And then we just came up with who ranked the highest for the design consultant. So we can put in future agenda items, if you want, just the final point rankings of those three.
I would like to see the dollar amounts. I just think the public has a right to know what we're turning down, we're turning away. And but, and, and they can understand, like, look, we have a panel of engineers that are saying that this is just a better design. But I think just strictly for transparency purposes, I trust you again, but we answer to the public. And I just think it's vital to have, if we get three bids, let's show the public. That's just my preference. I don't know where the rest of the board stands, but I just have always been a fan of showing whatever we're getting.
Understood. The tricky part, there is, there is no bid. What, there's no, we're going to do your project for half a million dollars because we ask for, we ask for, we can ask for a general sealed cost estimate of the work. If that's what you'd like to see, that's fine. Usually we ask for their billing rates in a sealed envelope. But again, like this contract, we went through three or four negotiations with Kimley-Horn back and forth because they were slightly higher when we started out than the 470, that 470,000 that's in the item. So they said, well, we think you need to do this. And we said, no. And we even have some criteria we have to do with Caltrans back and forth because Caltrans pays for 88% of this. But there, this final number, this wasn't in any of the bids, this, the actual bid amount. It was just the proposal for the design services.
Okay, understood. Thank you.
Okay.
Just because I, I, I understand where Supervisor Cosmiki's coming from on, on the public side of this. I'm really hopeful with this new procurement software, we're going to be seeing a little more of a public-facing side and that purchasing policy update that will be coming back to the board. So I'm hopeful that more transparency will be coming in that. And I want to thank county council. I know Barbara's not here right now, but I know she's working really hard on this. But you're going right where I kind of am trying to get, where there's more transparency about the bidding process and, but at the same time, understanding in certain bidding environments, there is a proprietary confidentiality issue depending on the type of bid process. And I've been through both, the ones that are totally public and the ones that they'll never be public because it's, it's that contractor or that designer or that engineer, whoever it is, has, has trade secrets that they will not disclose publicly. So there's a balancing act and I'm hopeful that the procurement software will help expose that.
Yeah. And on that note, I'll try to do, I'll try to add more information for the RFQ, RFP process in the item as much as we can legally to be transparent as possible. And, and again, I would just humbly request that we don't, when we, when we go to a design consultant, it's not a bid, it's a request for design services, RFQ, RFP. So it's, it's just two different things. That's all. Yep. So, but yeah, I'll try to add as much, as much information as we possibly can, just to be as transparent as possible. So.
Thank you. Would someone like to make a motion?
Motion to approve as staff recommends.
Second.
So all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Anyone to post? Five zero. Thank you. Okay, now moving on to our last item, item 117, pulled by Supervisor Crowe.
I just wanted this to be a little more transparent for the public because it is such a hot issue sometimes about wastewater. And, and if you could just do a brief overview, that's all I'm asking for. So it's a little more transparent.
Absolutely. So I'll answer that in two parts. First part is, Absolutely. So I'll answer that in two parts. First part is, this specific item, basically the Central Coast Water Board, they, we submit reports to them annually. And for this last set of reports, they said, well, the, this year's requirements, you have to, I don't know if we'd submitted in the past or not, but we had to submit who is illegally, who's the legal owner of this Cielo Vista wastewater treatment plant and who is responsible ultimately to be the duly authorized representative for the operation of the wastewater treatment plant. And so the county is the owner operator of that treatment plant. And then only one of two people can be the, the duly authorized legally responsible official, actually. And I'll talk about the other representative in a minute. But the legally responsible official, which is what specifically this board item is about, can either be the principal executive officer, which is CAO Espinoza, or the ranking elected official, which is Chair Sutello. So they just said, you pick one or the other. They're the legal responsible official for this wastewater treatment plant. And so the CAO was selected and that was the form that we're filling out. And that was the extent of this item. However, to give some background on perhaps what your question is referring to, I think City of Hollister, City Council, very recently approved the strategy and the process with some other approvals that are needed in the background, to have the Gavlin College sanitary sewage waste travel down a new Cielo Vista street, across Fairview, down the existing Cielo Vista street, past the wastewater treatment plant of Cielo Vista and connect to a stub at Roberts Ranch, and then go down to what I'll call the regional wastewater treatment plant. And so as part of the forms that we'll be filling out and we have been filling out, those will potentially not be needed anymore because there's a lot of good momentum to help that process move forward. And so as a member of LAFCO, you'll probably be hearing a little bit more about that in the future. But it's, I think it's a good thing because to have the college have all their sewage go to their ball field or wherever it was going to go, the region, the state water board does not want that to happen because ultimately that sewage that's going to the leach field can get into groundwater and there's issues. And we have a lot of issues on that side of the world in the county with water. So the state's going to be very happy if the college's wastewater can travel down, bypass the wastewater treatment plant at Cielo Vista and go towards the regional wastewater treatment plant. So if that answers your question.
It kind of answers my question, but it, things are moving forward. I just know it's an area that Cielo Vista residents, I mean, when it says legally responsible official and we're dealing with a, basically a CSA that is financially responsible, it just, it's just a door. I want to make sure we're being very careful that it's very clear this is for reporting to the state and that's pretty much it.
Correct.
Just wanted to make sure that that was clear because it's not signing over any legal, yeah, I just.
That's why I mentioned the other process. Because the first process is, this is just a formality that we perform for the state when we're required to file reports.
Yep. I just wanted to make that clear to the public.
Yes.
Thank you.
Yes.
I'll make a motion, unless there's more comment. I'll make a motion to approve per staff recommendation.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Anyone to post? Five zero. Thank you so much. Can I get a motion to adjourn, please?
So moved.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Anyone to post? Five zero. Thank you very much. Have a good afternoon, everyone.